Good evening and welcome to the closed session of the Agoura Hills City Council of October 23, 2024. Special meeting. Welcome to the Agoura Hills City Council Closed Session. Please silence all cell phones and other electronic devices. If you wish to speak or submit a written comment related to the closed session item on this agenda, please complete and submit a comment card to the city clerk prior to the public comment portion of the meeting. I'll now call this meeting to order and defer to the city clerk for a roll call vote.
Good evening. Councilmember Anstett?
Here.
Councilmember Klein Lopez?
Here.
Councilmember Wolf?
Present.
Mayor Portim Sylvester?
Here.
Mayor Buckley-Weber?
Here.
Mayor Buckley-Weber, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Public comments. This section is reserved for persons wishing to speak on items listed on the agenda. If you wish to distribute something to the city council, please do not approach the council dais. Hand your item to our city clerk and she will distribute to us on your behalf. Public testimony is limited to three minutes per speaker and a speaker's time may not be transferred to another speaker. Persons addressing the city council shall not engage in disorderly conduct that disrupts or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of the meeting. I will now defer to the city clerk.
Thank you. We did not receive any written public comments nor do we have any speakers.
Thank you very much. We will now recess into closed session.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Agoura Hills City Council meeting of Wednesday, October 23, 2024. Please silence all cell phones and other electronic devices. If you wish to speak or submit a written comment, please complete a comment card for each item and submit to the city clerk prior to the public comment portion of the item. Since we have a fair number of people—Madam Clerk, could you just raise your hand real quick? There she is.
Thank you. I'm now going to call this meeting to order, and we start our meetings with a land acknowledgment. The city of Agoura Hills acknowledges that we occupy land originally and still inhabited and cared for by the Schumash Nation. Descendants of Schumash still remain, and we honor and pay our respects to their elders and various groups that make up the past, present, and emerging as they continue their stewardship of our lands and waters. We have a responsibility and commitment to elevate the stories, culture, and community of the original inhabitants of the city of Agoura Hills, and we are grateful to have the opportunity to live and work on these ancestral lands. We're now going to defer to Girl Scout Troop 176 to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening. We are Girl Scout Troop 176. Will the audience please rise? Color guard advance. Those not in uniform, please place your right hand over your heart. Please say with me the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Color guard, remove the colors. Color guard dismissed.
Thank you, ladies. Again, thank you to Girl Scout Troop 176. We're now going to take a roll call. Madam Clerk?
Good evening. Councilmember Anstad?
Here.
Councilmember Klein Lopez?
Here.
Councilmember Wolf?
Here.
Mayor Potem Sylvester?
Here.
Mayor Buckley-Webber?
Here.
Mayor Buckley-Webber, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Report of closed session. I will now defer to the city attorney, Candace Lee.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Direction is given to staff. No reportable action taken this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. And now I need a motion and a second to approve the agenda tonight.
Mayor Potem Sylvester sues.
I'll second. Deborah Klein Lopez.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Anstad?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein Lopez?
Aye.
Councilmember Wolf?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Sylvester?
Aye.
Mayor Buckley-Webber?
Aye.
Mayor Buckley-Webber, you have approval, five to zero.
Thank you. Now we move on to presentations, and we're going to start with Business of the Month: Presentation to Love's Pets. And if you guys—the horns—could meet me over here by the end of the dais. There we go. That's better. Okay. I'm thrilled to present the October Business of the Month Award to Love's Pets. Love's Pets in Agoura Hills is a beloved local pet store that has been serving our community for over 30 years, offering a wide range of high-quality pet supplies and products for all types of animals. They specialize in products to aid digestive tract issues, joint pain, allergies, and so much more. Known for their knowledgeable and friendly staff, Love's Pets provides personalized service to ensure that every pet receives the best non-veterinary care possible. Whether you're looking for grain-free, first-quality food and treats, nutritional supplements, fun pet toys, pet accessories, or expert advice, Love's Pets is the go-to spot for pet owners not only in Agoura Hills but the entire region. Thank you for being such an integral part of the Agoura Hills community and continuing to serve our residents and pet community. And I just want to say that I actually grew up with Larry. We grew up in Encino, and then I hadn't seen him for decades, and it was one of the few places here when I moved here, and he's still here. So, thank you very much. Would you like to say a few words?
Don't know how I made it this long. But happy to be here.
Great.
Thank you so much for that.
You're very welcome. You're very welcome. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. We are now going to move on to the 2024 Reyes Adobe Days 20th Anniversary Commemorative Poster Contest winner. So I'm going to go back over here, and Karen Kent from the Cultural Arts Council is here today. Want to join me, Karen? I'm in a huggy mood. Yes. This is the poster. Okay. Reyes Adobe Days Poster Contest. Where is Joan Sharon or Sharon? Come on up. You're our artist. It's very special. To commemorate the 20th anniversary of Reyes Adobe Days this year, the Cultural Arts Council launched a Reyes Adobe Day Poster Contest. The CAC, which is Cultural Arts Council, was looking for something that would encapsulate the arts and culture that has been an integral part of Reyes Adobe Days for 20 years. There was a call for artists, and the CAC chose a winner. This evening, the city would like to recognize a local, very talented artist and winner of the RAD 2024 Poster Contest, Joan Sharon. Joan enjoyed the arts as a child, studied fine art in college, including classes in Paris, but had to put her love of art on backburner to raise her family. Recently, Joan has been able to reconnect with her artistic side, jumping back into photography, painting, and specifically watercolor painting with mixed media paper collage. Joan is an active artist, an active participant in the Westlake Village Art Guild, Thousand Oaks Art Association, and becoming more involved in the Agoura Hills Cultural Arts Council. The winner of the RAD Poster Contest was awarded a $300 prize that was donated to the contest from the Frame Gallery. So we would like to thank Alisa Spalding, the owner of the Frame Gallery, and I believe it was she was our 2020 Business of the Year, possibly? Okay. The CAC was selling copies of the poster at RAD, and we are happy to announce that Joan will be at the Mayor's Art Show on November 7. Thank you. At the Mayor's Art Show, selling copies and signing her poster. So, thank you, Joan, for this beautiful gift to our community. Would you like to say a few words?
Well, I'm honored. I've been living in Agoura since 1985 with my husband Matt, raised our four kids here, and have enjoyed this community immensely. Certainly attended Reyes Adobe Days, but never at this level where I was able to create the poster. So it was a lot of fun, and it was an honor to be recognized. So I thank you.
And thank you, and to get past the artist in our Cultural Arts Council is really commendable. So, you know, that's really special. So, thank you very much. Let's have a picture taken. I'll get in the middle. There's the poster. Everybody can see it. Thank you. It's really lovely. Congratulations. Okay, so that was fun. We're going to now move on to some governmental work. So now we're moving on to Intergovernmental Special Purpose Committee and Departmental Reports. And we're going to defer to Mayor Protem Sylvester for a report from Los Virginus Malibu Council of Governments update.
Thank you. Firstly, the COG has received a request from the Los Angeles County Executive Committee for Regional Homeless Alignment, asking if the cities will support the Good Neighbor Pledge. So I've been asked to bring that back to our city council for consideration, so that's something that we could agendize to discuss. Did I say that correctly, Candace?
Yes, thank you.
Secondly, the COG needs to send a new representative to Metro's San Fernando Valley Service Council because Dennis Washburne is stepping down after many years serving on it. It meets on the first Wednesday of each month at 6:30 PM in Van Nuys, and they prefer be looking for somebody who uses public transport on a regular basis. So all the cities are trying to see if we can find someone that could represent us. The COG voted to support Measure G, the Los Angeles County Government Structure, Ethics, and Accountability Charter Amendment. Our city council had already taken a vote to support this. Captain Jen Sito is requesting the cities to promote the Real-Time Watch Center with our local businesses and residents, for everyone to get their cameras registered with the watch center. And there was a recent wildfire response training exercise with LA County, LA City, and Ventura County to practice common operations platforms and communications to make sure that we're all on one communications platform going forward, which was not the case in the Woolsey Fire. And there recently was installed a new camera in the Santa Monica Mountains to close the fire watch surveillance gap. And again, that camera feeds into the Lost Hills Watch Center, so it can be monitored 24/7. On Saturday, November 2, at 9:00 AM, there is going to be a Santa Monica Mountains Community Workshop on the gold-spotted oak bora, which is an invasive beetle that is killing oak trees, and that's going to be held at the Santa Monica Mountains Fund HQ at 1 Baxter Way, Suite 180 in Westlake Village. And then finally, yesterday, I went on a tour with Terry Dipple, our executive director of the COG, to the center. We have a new contract for homeless to unhoused persons in our community. It's the San Fernando Valley Community Mental Health Center, and besides providing temporary supportive housing, it also has a lot of appropriate support services. It includes case management, substance abuse treatment, mental health treatment, independent living skills. And the goal of the center is to provide a safe place for individuals to work with onsite case managers to gain the skills needed to live independently. They can beat some of their residents, they say, maybe they're up from two months up to two years if necessary, but they try their best to give them all the support services they need. So I would recommend all of us, you know, if you can find the time to go and visit, because it was very enlightening. And that's my report.
Thank you very much. Now I will report on the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy Advisory Committee update. I want you all to know, and thank you to Amy and your staff for a lovely night on Monday night. We held the, like, 506th meeting up at the event center, which we haven't done for years. And it was just, it couldn't be nicer. And there's a lot of new members on the advisory committee over the years, and they had never been there, and they just fell in love with our event center, and they thought Agoura Hills was just so beautiful. And Louis thankfully brought out the emergency ops vehicle that the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy gave us a grant for. So some of the people went out and got to see, and that's always exciting for us to see where our money goes. So that was fun. And then what was really special is that we honored Senator Portentino, who is no longer going to be in office, you know, within the next, you know, he has about six weeks left. And he's just been a true, true environmental steward and has been wonderful with the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy. He was on, he's been on the advisory, was on the advisory committee before he was an elected official. I think he was on a city council, but he spent many years listening and attending. And his staff member always, Deklon, always appears at our meetings remotely, which is really special to us, because not too many legislators have the time or the staff to do that. So we really thank them. We had a very large cake that was chair masseuse, so that was a lot of fun. And other than that, in terms of business, we discussed several letters and objections to development plans. The closest one was to Simi Valley. It was in Simi Valley, and it was, had to do with wildlife mitigation. They wanted, some things that we're looking for in a development plan so that the wildlife can freely move in and out of the Simi Hills. So that's that. And then next, we have the Clean Power Alliance update, and I'll defer to Councilmember Klein Lopez.
Thank you. It was great to share with you at the last meeting, our trip to New Mexico to see the largest wind farm in the Western Hemisphere that will be online shortly, in probably about 18 months. But since then, I do want to share two customer programs that Clean Power Alliance is starting to offer. Customer programs are our favorite part of Clean Power Alliance. The first one is called Energy Team Services, because even if you are the chair of the board of the largest clean energy company in the nation, you still have trouble getting solar. And if you want to change to a heat pump, what do you do? It's all very, very confusing with the technical side of it, the grant side of it, what contractors do you trust? It's all very, very confusing. So Clean Power Alliance now has an Energy Team service, and they provide personalized technical assistance, virtual energy assessments, and customer electrification plans, rebate finding tools, contractor finding resources, and referrals to Clean Power Alliance programs and other offerings that can save you money. And again, this is for solar, it's for heat pumps, if you want to electrify your appliances. And so it's just a great free service that we are offering our clients. The other very exciting thing is for our lower-income customers. So you know, in the county and the state, actually, and I'm assuming, you know, across the country, there are minimum temperature laws. So for example, if you are a landlord and you rent your apartment, you have to provide a heating unit that would make sure that the apartment or condo or whatever it is is a minimum temperature so that the people in the apartment don't freeze in cold weather. Well, we don't have this at the maximum. And with climate change and all of the heat emergencies that we have, the counties actually looking into putting in an ordinance that talks about a maximum heat temperature that apartments and rentals need to be. And so then the question is, how do you make that happen when a lot of these apartments are old and it's a cost to the people who live there? So Clean Power Alliance has started a program that offers a discount for cooling units. So CPA customers on CARE or FARA, which are the discounted rates, will receive a combined point-of-sale discount of $300. So it's $210 from us and $90 from the Energy Efficiency Funds that are at the state level. And it's an immediate application to their purchase. So they get a QR code, they go to Home Depot, they go to Lowe's, they can pick from certain units that fit those qualifications, and it's instant. They don't have to mail anything in and wait for the $300 back. So we're hoping it's really going to take off and make a difference to those who are the most impacted and most at risk from extreme heat. So those are the two exciting programs, and love the, you know, love the good stuff we're doing for the customers. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you. So if I wanted to find out about heat pumps, where would I go? CPA's website?
Yeah, if you go to the CPA website and you look up the Energy Team, you can put in a request, and someone will reach out to you.
Thank you. And now, do we have any reports from staff? Nothing? Okay. Any reports from the city council? Seeing nothing, then we will move on to public comments. This section is reserved for persons wishing to speak on items not listed on the agenda that are under the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. If you have something to distribute to the city council, please do not approach the dais. Hand your item to the city clerk, and she will distribute to us on your behalf. Public testimony is limited to three minutes per speaker, and a speaker's time may not be transferred to another speaker. Persons addressing the city council shall not engage in disorderly conduct that disrupts or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of the meeting. I will now defer to the city clerk.
Thank you. We did not receive any written public comments. However, we do have two speaker cards. Bernie Mattis, followed by Claire, is it Guillory?
Come on up. I remember you. It's good to see you.
Nice to be seen. Stand here. Hi, I'm Bernie Mattis, and had a question on, about a year ago, I saw, I'm walking my dog around our neighborhood around Lindero Middle School, a lot of sidewalks were all numbered. Not all, but, you know, all the ones that looked like that need repaired were numbered. And over the time, it just kind of faded, and a lot of the sidewalks weren't repaired. So I was just wondering if that's going to be done, you know, if that was, you know, in something in the near future, you know, repair the sidewalks. And also on Rainbowview Drive, right next to, right by the school, there should be a speed limit sign. There's a lot of speeding going on on Rainbowview Drive. That's the street I live on, and there's no speed limit sign. Nobody knows how fast they should be going on that street.
And I believe there is a special speed limit next to a school.
Yeah.
So, right. Thank you for being here. I'm going to have you talk to, either after the meeting, or give your contact information to our Public Works Director, Jessica Forte. She's right over there, and she'll be able to answer those questions for you. But thank you for coming in tonight. Next, we have another speaker?
Yes, Claire Guillory.
I've been here a long time, because I'm starting to know all of you. Hi, Claire. Good to see you again.
Hi, good to see you, too. Hi, my name is Claire Guillory, and I'm a 12-year local ambassador girl scout working on my Gold Award project, which is the highest honor in girl scouting. Sadly, the American Psychological Association reports that more than 20% of teens like me have seriously considered suicide. That's why I've chosen to focus on suicide prevention and teen mental health for my leadership project. I'm here tonight to invite the community to join me and a panel of local experts I have assembled for a live Zoom webinar on Saturday, October 26, at 11:00 AM. At this one-hour event, I plan to share valuable resources and information intended to benefit not only those struggling with mental health challenges, but for anyone wanting to help those in need of support. For the webinar, I have recruited suicide prevention and mental health professionals from the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention, the Light Hope Life Foundation, and the LA Unified School District Student Health and Human Services to provide their advice and guidance. I'm hoping to reach as many teens and families in our local community as possible, and I invite everyone listening to not only join us, but to help me spread the word. The Zoom link can be found on one of my project flyers, which I left in the back, and they'll also be available at the rec center. And you can also find information about the webinar on my project website, which is On my website, you can also find helpful resources, such as a crisis line, information and contacts, a list of free mental health apps designed for teens, and links to mental health wellness resources. I would like to say a special thank you to the city of Agoura and its community services director, Ms. Amy Brink, who has been helping me with my project. The city helped me in spreading my message to local residents at its recent creek cleanup event during September, which was National Suicide Prevention Month. And finally, a huge thank you to Agoura's wonderful mayor, Elise Buckley-Webber, who graciously took the time to give me her thoughts on the topic of teen mental health in an interview. That can also be found on my project website. Again, the date and time for my webinar is Saturday, October 26, at 11:00 AM on Zoom. Thank you so much for listening, and have a good night.
And thank you. This is a really, really important issue, so we're really, it's wonderful that someone of your age has taken a leadership role on it. So thank you. And just to confirm, it was suicidepreventiongoldaward.com?
Yeah.
Great. Thank you so much for coming in. Oh, question?
I just, actually, not a question, I just want to say thank you for doing this project. It's something that everybody talks about, and not a lot of people do anything about it. And you actually are. And so I want to really commend you for doing that. And I also want to commend you for staying on to do the Gold Award and the Girl Scouts. I know that's not a lot of Girl Scouts that stay and do that award, and I think it's fantastic that you're doing that.
Thank you so much.
I just want to commend you for all that.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Thank you for coming. We appreciate it. And now, that's it for speakers for matters not on the agenda. So we will now move to, give me a second here. We're going to move on to the council consent calendar. This section is reserved for persons wishing to speak on items on the consent calendar. I will now defer to the city clerk.
Thank you. No written public comments have been received, and no speaker cards have been submitted.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the city council on the consent calendar? Seeing none, I'll now call for a motion and a second to adopt the consent calendar.
Councilmember Wolf?
This is Councilmember Wolf, and I'll make a motion to adopt the consent calendar.
Thank you.
I'll second. Debra Klein-Lopez.
Thank you. And I'll defer to the City Clerk for a roll call vote.
Councilmember Anstad?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein-Lopez?
Aye.
Councilmember Wolf?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Sylvester?
Aye.
Mayor Buckley-Weber?
Aye.
Mayor Buckley-Weber, you have approval, five to zero.
Thank you. We are now moving on to a continued open public hearing revocation. Our next item was continued from September 11, 2024. Hang on one second. I've been kind of hoarding these, but these are some comments that came in. Okay. Let's see. It was continued from September 11, 2024, and is a request to receive and file staff's withdrawal of a request to revoke business license number 006982 under case number O T H E R dash 001367 dash 2021, and close and pull off calendar a continued open public hearing to consider the revocation. I will now open the public hearing and defer to the Community Development Director Denise Thomas.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council. My name's Denise Thomas. I'm the Community Development Director here in the City of Agora Hills. This item, we have been working with the prosecutor on this item for some time, and with due respect, I'm going to defer to him to provide you with kind of an overview of this item. Thank you.
Good evening, Council. As Ms. Thomas mentioned, my name's Eric Marcus. I'm the City Prosecutor representing staff with respect to this proceeding. And, you know, we've been before council a number of times on this issue. Council has given both staff and the business owner some direction after each hearing. And at this point, in light of all the circumstances, we have decided to forego proceeding with this revocation request. And staff is no longer asking that the council consider any request to revoke this business license at this time.
Okay. Thank you. Does any council member have any questions? Councilmember Klein-Lopez?
Yeah, I have a lot of questions. You know, our emails are full of messages from the surrounding business owners who are quite upset about this. So can you maybe go into a little more detail about what the status is and what the next steps are?
At this time, we have closed, code enforcement has closed the code enforcement file with respect to these particular alleged violations. There is another code enforcement file that has been opened with respect to this property address. And we are, I don't want to comment on an open code enforcement file, but we are moving forward in due course with respect to the issues, with respect to the matters at issue in that code enforcement file.
So I see in our staff report that it's October 14 was the new code enforcement case, and a notice of violation was issued for violations of our noise ordinance. Can you talk to me about the timing of that?
Are you asking, is your question geared towards what is going to happen in the future?
My question is geared towards a timeframe that we can discuss with the business owners who have reached out to us who are upset about this. What do we tell them in terms of what is happening and what's happening next, so that we can justify closing this longstanding open issue?
Certainly. Well, just to avoid any confusion, the issue itself is the subject, the noise issue is the subject of the ongoing code enforcement case, the one that we've opened. The intent is not to allow an unlawful condition to continue to exist in the city. In terms of timing and what the public can expect, a notice of violation has been issued that delineated certain tasks that we would like the business owner to undertake.
By when?
There was a 30-day deadline set in the notice of violation, which I believe went out a few weeks ago. October 14, I'm being told, was the date that it was issued. So there's a 30-day deadline set forth in that notice of violation. Upon the conclusion of that deadline, depending on what occurs, we will move forward with the next steps.
And that's my question. What are the next steps? If it, if obviously, if he takes care of the noise, and he, you know, completes the circumstances of the violation, the case, the violation's closed. And if he doesn't?
And if he doesn't, there are a number of enforcement remedies available to staff and to the city. I would hesitate to venture into the area of my work product. But as I mentioned, there is no intent to allow any sort of unlawful condition, be it noise or otherwise, to exist at the property on a go-forward basis.
Okay, let me ask it one more way. When I get the email from the business owner who says, this is still going on, and it's been going on for years, what timeframe are we generally looking at that we will say we are taking care of this issue?
You can-
Because they're quite upset that this is being closed, and, you know, if there's a more valid, recent code enforcement issue, then that's fine. But-
We are moving-
Help me respond to my constituents.
You can let any complainants know that we are currently working to abate any alleged violations. This is an ongoing process. We certainly have to afford the business owner due process with respect to the manner in which we're handling this particular code enforcement case. But we are moving as expeditiously as possible, and we will have additional information in approximately two weeks. There will be zero delay with respect to the handling of this matter.
Zero delay after two weeks?
There will be zero delay-
Of next steps?
So, exactly. There will be no delay in moving to the next steps. This file will not sit idly.
Okay. And then my next question, I think, would be to staff, which is, why are we getting these emails? Because obviously, this has not been communicated to the business owners who are complaining that they think that we are just dismissing this case with no resolution.
The way that the staff report, ongoing code enforcement cases are, we aren't able to share all the status and the steps that we're taking in an ongoing code enforcement case. Those things we can't share. What we can do is tell them what is in the public domain. So they are aware that a notice of violation was issued on the 14th, and they are aware that this case has been, that the case that was the subject of the revocation and the code enforcement violation from before has been withdrawn. We can't give them intimate details and next-
Now, what I'm saying is that these emails that came to us, their understanding is not correct. Their understanding is that we are dismissing everything and closing everything out. And that's not true. And so my question is, what are we doing to make sure that our neighbors know that this is still an ongoing issue that we will be taking care of expeditiously?
It's my understanding that we advised them that this case was going to be heard this evening. The code enforcement, our senior code enforcement official, Trinise Bandi, advised them that this item was going to be happening this evening. So they were made aware of it. They knew that this item was coming. I can't speak to why they're confused. I would be happy-
Well, yeah, they're confused, is what I'm saying.
I would be, we speak to them on a regular basis because they usually contact us, and I've received no calls from them.
Public comment came through?
Right. We haven't, I haven't spoken to them. Trinise Bandi communicated with them that it's going on. I can't speak to why they are confused, but we will certainly reach out to them and let them know that the issue has not been dropped.
That's my request. Thank you.
I will do that.
And in all transparency, let me tell you that I reached out to the, both Diana and Mary, and spoke to them on the phone yesterday to apologize because, as mayor, this has been going on for so long, and I felt terrible. They actually were going to show up tonight and take time off from work. And I said, well, they can show up and/or they can send in written comments, which generated those comments. But to say that they're frustrated and upset is putting it mildly. And all I could do is to apologize for all of us. And, you know, under my leadership, I'm sorry to have seen this happen. But I explained that due process is important, and that everybody needs to have their day before us, and we'll be, we need to do this right, and so we will move forward. And so that's where those comments come from. And in the comments, one of, Diana Ricci-Vanelli requested that this Thursday and Friday, she has a top recording artist coming to record at her studio, and she has asked that the applicant really make every attempt this Thursday and Friday not to scare this, with the loud noises, not to scare this recording artist away. It's, she's a very important recording artist, and they really want to make sure that she's, you know, able to complete what she's working on. So if you can do that, and you might be getting up to speak, but I know that we all would appreciate it, as she would as well. So any other questions of staff? Okay, then, let's see, now that the public hearing is open, it was continued from September 11, 2024. Public comments on this item are limited to tonight's topic of closing and pulling the hearing off calendar. If you have something to distribute to the City Council, please hand it to our City Clerk, and do not approach the dais. Public testimony is limited to three minutes per speaker, and a speaker's time may not be transferred to another speaker. I'll now defer to the City Clerk for public comments.
Thank you. Written public comments were received by email right around 4:00 p.m. today, and they have been distributed to you on the dais. Diane Ricci-Vanelli, Agora, and Maria Di Maggio, Agora. I do not have any speaker cards.
Thank you very much. Did everybody get to see the comments? Okay, great. Thank you. Before moving on to deliberations, does any council member have any further questions? Seeing none, we'll now move on to deliberations. Councilmember Klein-Lopez, why don't I start with you?
To say that I am also extremely frustrated and unhappy that this is being pushed, this can is being kicked down the road again, is also an understatement. I am not an attorney, I'm not a prosecutor, and I'm not a code compliance officer. And so I will trust our staff and our consultants, that they understand and are doing the right thing to get this issue taken care of. So while I'm extremely unhappy with the timing of all this, I will certainly take the advice of those who suggested that the current process be closed and that we focus on the current noise ordinance. I think the issue is the issue, and the issue is still not resolved, and our constituents are still in the same boat. So again, I'm not exactly sure how we got to this point again, but it's going to be the last time that I'm up here saying, okay, I'll give it more time, because it's been years at this point. So let's get it done. I will take the staff recommendation, and let's get it done.
Thank you. Councilmember Wolf?
I'm willing to move forward with the staff recommendation with the caveat that I really hope that we only hear it one more time, because this has drawn on and taken a lot of staff time, and I think that it's not fair to all the parties involved. So I'd really like to see this move forward in a quick, expeditious manner. So I will take the staff recommendation as well.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Anstad?
Ready to move forward with the staff recommendation.
Thank you. Mayor Potem Sylvester?
And I second what my fellow council members have said, and I apologize to our residents who are having the noise issues, because I know it is extremely frustrating. And I know there are certain things that we cannot say at this point, that our staff is working on, and I just look forward to it being resolved quickly. So I do take the staff recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. And I don't have much else to add. I think I've made it pretty clear how disappointed I am. But it's our job to have a fair and, you know, a fair and unbiased decision-making body, and we will give that to our residents as well as everybody who comes in to speak on this issue. So let's get it done quickly, and we'll go from there. So with that, I need a motion and a second to receive and file staff's withdrawal of request to revoke business license number 00, you know, okay, never mind, receive and file staff's withdrawal of request to revoke business license number 006982 for alleged violations on March 8 through 11, 2024, under case number O T H E R hyphen 001367 hyphen 2021, and close and pull off calendar the continued open public hearing. I'll now call for a motion and a second.
Mayor Potem Sylvester so moves.
Councilmember Chris Anstad, seconds.
Thank you. And I'll defer to the City Clerk for a roll call vote.
Councilmember Anstad?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein-Lopez?
Aye.
Councilmember Wolf?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Sylvester?
Aye.
Mayor Buckley-Weber?
Aye.
Mayor Buckley-Weber, you have approval, five to zero.
Thank you. We will now move on to the Continued Public Hearing Appeal. Our next item is a Continued Public Hearing from August 14, 2024, to consider the Agora Hills Planning Commission's denial of a conditional use permit, an oak tree permit for 28340 Balkans Drive for a request to construct a two-story, single-family residence and attached garage. I will now open the public hearing. Before we move on to the staff presentation, I will defer to Councilmember Wolf for an announcement.
Thank you. I have to recuse myself on this item, having already voted on it when it came before the Planning Commission. So I will be recusing myself.
Thank you very much. And I will now defer to our city attorney, Candace Lee.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. As I usually do when we have these de novo hearings, I like to provide a summary of tonight's proceedings to assist the council and to give the public an idea of what to expect this evening. I know some of this is repeat for those who have joined us in the past, but we definitely have people, new people who might attend, so I want to reiterate the process. So first, the council will hold what's called a Continued De novo Public Hearing on the 28340 Balkans Project. In the City of Agora Hills, all appeals of the Planning Commission decisions, all appeals of Planning Commission decisions are heard de novo at the council level. A de novo land use hearing is a completely new hearing where the city council takes a fresh look at a project and is not limited to the issues raised in the appeal application. This allows the council to look at all the components, including individual entitlements, for a project and make a decision on the project as a whole. The council need not give any particular weight or deference to what the Planning Commission decided. Now, they certainly may consider what the Planning Commission thought about this project, but the council is not bound to follow the Planning Commission's decision. Next, I'd like to summarize the order of proceedings for the hearing this evening. The mayor already opened the public hearing on August 12, 2020, which was then continued to January 24, 2024, and then to tonight, October 23, 2024. So this is a Continued Public Hearing. Next, we will have staff report. Next, we have a City Council Questions of Staff. At this time, council should avoid commenting on the project. Please do stick to questions of staff. We will then turn to Council Disclosure of Ex-Party Communications. As this is a quasi-judicial matter, if council members have received relevant information about this matter outside the public hearing, including visiting the site, they should publicly announce that information obtained before testimony begins. We will then move to the applicant's presentation, who, the applicant is also the appellant this evening. They will get 15 minutes, and then the council will have an opportunity to ask the applicant questions. We will then move to the public comment portion of the public hearing. As usual, each speaker will be allotted three minutes. Council, may I ask questions of the public during public comment as well? We will then turn to the applicant's rebuttal, which will be five minutes. Then we will have last call for council questions, and council should conclude questions prior to the close of the public hearing. Then the mayor will close the public hearing, and then the council will engage in discussion and deliberation. During deliberation, the council should explain why they can or cannot make certain findings required for approval- required for approval of the proposed project, so that staff can prepare appropriate resolution of approval or denial based on council's direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. We're now going to move on to the staff presentation, and I'll defer to community development director Denise Thomas.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. Good evening, City Council. My name's Denise Thomas. I'm the community development director. The de novo appeal continued hearing item that you're going to be discussing this evening has a presentation from staff, and Katrina Garcia, the project manager, will proceed with that presentation, and we're available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Denise, and good evening, Mayor and City Council members. As mentioned earlier, the item before you tonight is a continued public hearing for a new single-family residence, case number C U P dash 01533 dash 2018 and Oak dash 01534 2018. Since it's been about nine months since this project was heard, I'll provide a short summary of the history of the project, the location of the project and context of the surrounding neighborhood, the revised project description, the proposed architecture, staff's recommendation, and the findings council would need to consider during deliberations. So in June 20, or June 18, 2020, the planning commission adopted resolution 20 dash 1245 to deny the project. On July 1st, 2020, the applicant appealed that decision, and then on August 12, 2020, the city council held a de novo public hearing to hear the applicant's appeal of the planning commission's denial. The city council provided comments and feedback to the applicant, which included suggestions on redesigning the project to be more consistent with the zoning district and the general plan by reducing the size of the house and adding more articulation. The city council then allowed the applicant to redesign the project to address the concerns and return to city council to continue the public hearing with the proposed revisions and design. The applicant returned to city council to continue the public hearing on January 24, 2024, and presented revisions that included a different architectural style that incorporated more articulation in the front elevation. The city council expressed concerns about the size of the structure relative to the slope and the buildable site, the lack of articulation and feasibility of the horsekeeping area. To allow the applicant to address these issues, the council voted to continue the hearing on or before August 14, 2024. The applicant requested for an extension to be able to update technical reports and to revise the plans. The city council accepted the request to continue the public hearing to October 23, 2024. Between January and October, the applicant went through several plan iterations and report updates, which were reviewed by staff and the LA County Fire Department. As part of the review process, staff reached out to the Old Agora homeowners group to allow them to view the current plans at the counter and provide a letter. Plans were reviewed, however, no letter was received. The proposal being presented today reflects the technical analysis conducted by staff, city consultants, external agencies, and have been determined to be conditionally feasible and objectively consistent with the code. So the project site is located on a one-acre vacant lot on Balkans Drive with an average slope of 49%. The site is surrounded by other developed lots with single-family residences that range from 2,600 square feet to 5,400 square feet, also on lots that are approximately 1 to 2 acres. The neighborhood is topographically diverse, with many lots containing steep slopes. Because of this, many homes have been sited at the base or at the top of the slopes where it's naturally flatter. In this instance, the residence is sited at the base of the slope to avoid extensive grading and negatively impacting the oak trees. It's also worth mentioning that nine additional oak tree saplings have grown on the site since 2020, with a total of 24 protected oaks. The current proposal will still retain all oak trees on site. The project has gone through several changes over the past four years, and the next couple of slides will show what changes have taken place with regard to the setbacks and the size of the structure. In August 20, in August 2020, the setback of the house was at 26 feet at its closest point to the right-of-way line, while the rest of the house to the left of the garage was at 29 feet. The length of the structure parallel to the street was at 83 feet. In response to the city council comments in August 2020, the applicant submitted this iteration, which included more articulation in the front. The 26-foot setback from the garage to the right-of-way line was maintained, and the length of the house remained at 83 feet. The current proposal still shows the garage at 26 feet from the right-of-way line, but adds more variation to the left side of the garage with a front porch set further into the lot at 33 feet. And in response to the previous feedback, the applicant also reduced the length of the house to 72 feet, which is 11 feet shorter than what was previously proposed. By reducing the length and the depth of the house, the floor area was reduced from 4,180 square feet to 3,620 square feet. The current proposal is still relatively in the same position as the previous iterations, but now has a smaller footprint. The proposal also now includes a new low retaining wall in the front yard to support the landscaped area and the septic field. The two stacked retaining walls are proposed in the same area with a maximum height of six feet each and tapers down towards the east and the west property line. The project also cites a conceptual area of 1,500 square feet for horsekeeping located on the east side of the property. Given the steep slope of the lot, the equestrian area can be made optional by the city council. This cross-section of the site shows a structure relative to the hill. The elevation, the elevation at the street is approximately 1,092 feet, and the structure rises to an elevation of 1,125 feet. The code allows structures to rise 15 feet above the average elevation of the rear setback line, which in this instance is 1,145 feet. Technically, the structure can rise up to 1,160 feet. However, because the house is sited at the bottom of the hill, the building only rises to 1,125 feet, which is 35 feet less than the maximum allowed. This table shows a side-by-side statistical comparison of the original 2020 proposal, the proposal in January of this year, and the current proposal. The size of the house was reduced to 3,620 square feet, which is less than 560 square feet than the original. The garage was also reduced to 650 square feet. By reducing the size of the structure, the lot coverage was also reduced to 5.8% of the lot and still less than the 25% maximum. The proposal still meets all setback requirements in the district and increases the setback on the west side property line to 75 feet. The height of the structure remains the same as the previous proposal at 26 feet and still less than the maximum 35 feet that's allowed. The architecture of the current proposal remains the same as the previous design. The primary color and material is a pale yellow stucco with stone veneer accents on the first floor front elevation. The window frames were modified from white to black, and the roof tiles remain a terracotta color. The second story is setback further than the first story to minimize the visual massing from the street, and the front elevation also features multiple cross gables that vary in height and located on different planes to create additional articulation. The rear elevation will also feature the same primary color in stucco seen on the front elevation and includes two balconies. The east and west elevations will also feature the same colors and materials as the front elevation. These perspectives show the varying roof heights along the front elevation and the different depths of the house, including portions of the second floor that overhang the first floor. And lastly, here's a rendering of the front elevation, which shows the proposed colors and materials. So that staff would like to recommend that the city council continue the public hearing and consider the following options. One, affirm the planning commission's original decision and deny the project. Two, reverse the planning commission's decision and approve the project as presented, subject to the conditions proposed by staff. Or three, reverse the planning commission's decision and approve the project with modifications and/or amend the project's conditions of approval. The city council's decision would be based on a set of findings, which include the conditional use permit findings, hillside findings, site plan review findings, architectural review findings, and oak tree findings. If any of these findings need to be viewed during deliberations, I'll be able to pull them up on the screen. This concludes my presentation. If there are any questions, I'm available to answer. Otherwise, the applicant's also present to respond. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next thing is, do any council members have questions of staff? Mayor Protem?
Thank you. Yes, can you just clarify a few things for me? The elevation at street level, if I'm correct, is 1,092, is that right?
Correct. So the street level elevation is 1,092.
Okay, and then it goes up four feet to 1,096 before any building occurs?
Correct.
So where is all the dirt going that is going to have to be removed for grading?
The current proposal doesn't propose to export any dirt. Any cuts will be scattered throughout the site.
So will that raise the finished elevation above 1,096?
The finished elevation is 1,096 at the garage level.
So that's a given. It's not going to go any higher than that?
Correct.
Okay. And the depth, as we're talking about, you know, pushing some of it back, what is the depth from the front of the garage to the, to the second part where the two-story starts?
I believe the depth is about 27 feet.
Between, no, and maybe you didn't understand me, from where the, where the garage is in relation to the street, and then where the, the rest of the building is in regards to the depth from the street?
So from the garage to the street or the right-of-way line, it's 26 feet.
It's 26 feet, and then the rest of the building is half far, much further back?
Okay, so the depth from the first, the face of the garage to the second story wall plane is about seven feet.
So there's seven feet difference. And is there anything in between those? I mean, does the front door come up further with steps and things, or?
Um, let me pull up. So this plan shows the different wall planes. So on the, the garage face is at 26 feet. The front porch is pushed in further at 33 feet from the right-of-way line, and the rest of the house to the left is, also varies from between 31 and 30 feet.
Between 31 feet. Okay, so if the garage is 26, and the, the portion of the house to the right as you're facing uphill is 31 feet?
Correct.
Further back. Okay, so that's a difference of five feet. Right. Thank you. Let me just see. And the, the total width of the house, you said, is now 72 inches wide?
Uh, 72 feet.
And that, sorry, not inches, feet. That includes the garage?
Correct.
And what is the, how wide is just the garage portion?
I'd have to pull up the plans. I, I can't remember off the top of my head, but we can pull up the plans in private.
Because it looks sort of pretty equal, 50, 50.
Oh, it's about 33 feet.
33 wide, feet wide. Okay, so 33 feet wide for the garage, and then the house itself is 41 feet. Right? Because I see that in, in the printout from the applicant.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you. My questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Anstead?
My questions actually center around the horsekeeping area. I just wanted to ask about the area that's currently designated. I, I saw in the report, the staff report, that it said the average slope in that, in the, in the lot is 49%. And the area that's designated currently for the horsekeeping area is that, at a 49% slope of that area?
We didn't do the analysis of just the equestrian area, the average, we, we usually ask for the average slope of the entire lot. So 49% is the percentage for the entire lot.
So it could be even steeper than that, if it's on the hill?
Possibly.
Okay. So the other question I have is, have we ever, do you know of where we've approved a horsekeeping area that has that steep of a, of a slope before?
I can't remember, and I'm not too sure off the top of my head. I didn't do that research, but we can double-check if needed.
And how about, can you tell me whether, have, has the city council ever voted or, or the staff recommended to ever, for residences that's in the Old Agora overlay to, to do away with the horsekeeping area? In other words, like you, in the report, it said that we could waive that requirement. Have we ever done that before?
The, there are instances, I don't have the cases in front of me. I would have to go and pull resolutions, but, but the planning commission has approved a waiver. There are specific requirements, if the lot has a certain topography that's extremely steep, or if the lot is very small and they have a hardship, they can make an argument, and the planning commission has the ability to grant it. And I believe since I've been here that we, I want to say there are two that the planning commission has approved. One, under the old planning commission, when councilmember Wolf was on the commission, and one under, I believe, the commission when Mayor Protem Sylvester was on there. I believe there are two cases. With respect to staff waiving them, staff doesn't have the authority, based on the code, to waive them in ordinary situations. So if you just want a house, and you don't want to do it, and you're going through an administrative process, staff doesn't have the ability to waive it. However, if an ADU is being proposed, state law restricts what we may and may not deny an ADU for, and if the place that you want to place your ADU is in a designated equestrian area, we don't have the authority to deny that permit.
All right, thank you. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Klein Lopez?
Thank you. Regarding, okay, so I watched the last meeting we had from January 2024, just to review and catch up, remember what we all said. Can you talk to me again about that? So if a future owner wanted to create an equestrian area, they would be responsible for grading that area? And is that? Yeah, go ahead.
Yes, that's correct. They would have to submit for a grading permit and a building permit to be able to have an equestrian area.
Okay. And, and by us approving, if we were to approve this plan with that equestrian area designated, is that in some ways kind of beholden us to approve plans for grading and, and building? Because I would, I guess my, my, my fear is if we were to approve this, and then another owner 20 years down the road wants to build an area, and then the council at that time says, well, we're not going to give you a permit to grade, and you can't, you know, then they're in this boat all over again with building on the hill. So does that somehow bind us to, to that area to grade and build?
Thank you, Councilmember Klein Lopez, for the question. The answer is, you would be approving a site plan. And if the site plan identifies where the equestrian area is supposed to be, as long as the conditions of approval are met, which means that you submit your application and begin construction or get building permit approvals within a certain period of time, the entitlement would cover that area as an equestrian area. And if a future resident or this resident wanted to construct it, they wouldn't have to come back to you, because you would be approving the equestrian location. They would just go through the administrative process. Does that answer?
Yes, got it. Thank you. Okay, and then my next question is, you said that these most recent plans were reviewed by staff and the fire department. Were there iterations of this that got rejected by staff and by the fire department, or was this easy to, to sail through? Oh, I see a no.
So the applicant did submit a different design, which included a portion of the building, a good chunk of the left side of the building, to be relocated, budding the, the first retaining wall, which was an issue with the fire department, because it lacked a five-foot access around the building. And so he was advised to redesign the project so that the fire department can access the building.
Okay, so the, the applicant tried to, to implement some of the suggestions that the council had given him, and the fire department came back and said, that's not going to work?
Correct.
Okay, understand. And then my next question is, you said that the HOA, or representative from the Old Agora HOA, came to the counter and reviewed the plans, but did not submit a letter?
I believe someone, I I believe someone, I wasn't, I wasn't there at the time, but I believe someone from Old Agora representing the committee came to City Hall to view plans, and I believe Robbie might have been there. He could provide additional background information on that.
Okay.
Yes, I I was there. I I showed somebody from the homeowners association. I forget the name of the individual who came in, but they did look at the plans. They knew Katrina was going to be out, and so we we had the plans ready for them to view.
And we did not receive a a a letter in response?
No.
Okay. Those are my questions. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions as well, and many of my questions were answered. Thank you, Councilmember Anstad. I had questions, the same questions about the horsekeeping. So I can't tell 100%, but is that a three-car garage or a two-car garage?
It's a three-car garage.
Okay. And I noticed in the staff report, there's a comment that's made. It says, "The project proposes 16 modern cylindrical up-down light fixtures." My note's in the way. Hang on. "Throughout the exterior of the residence, should the city council decide to approve the project, staff recommends the city council condition the project to require the lights to be shielded and downward facing to prevent glare and excessive light spillage onto adjacent properties." Don't we put that in all of our conditions of approval in the residential areas? Or we literally affirmatively have to tell you that?
We include it, do you want to, we include it sometimes on the conditions of approval. It is not code, but it is like, it is a guideline.
Okay, and so we would need to add that to this project? Okay, thank you. And then there's a note in the staff report about the ARP recommendations. And I don't, you know, I and I know that at one of the hearings, might have even been at the planning commission level, to be honest, they, it was reported what those ARP recommendations to enhance the design were and that the applicant declined to make all of the recommended changes. And I'm just wondering if you remember what the ARP recommended and what was or was not done?
So it was a very fluid meeting, so I I was able to catch a couple of the things that they were requesting for, which was to include dormers on the sec, on the portion of the second story, the roof. That wasn't included in the current design. There was an area on the right side of the building that had an awkward structure, the structure was jutting out a little bit, and they were, they recommended to put a lean-to type of roof style. That wasn't included. They suggested to incorporate three separate roll-up garage doors as opposed to the two-to-one configuration, which is currently proposed, but that wasn't included.
Thank you. And do you recall whether or not the planning, the planning commission exempted the horsekeeping area?
They did not.
They did not. Okay. Ms. Thomas told us that the planning commission, a couple of times, may have over the years exempted the horsekeeping area. What about the city council?
To my knowledge, the city, not since I've been here, have you done that. Generally speaking, most of these projects are approved by the planning commission and do not get appealed. So you wouldn't have had an opportunity to review something like that. But to my knowledge, since I've been here, I've not brought one to you with a recommendation for waiver.
Thank you. That's all the questions that I have. So if there's no further questions at this time, we're going to move on to whether or not any council members have had any ex parte communications to disclose. Let's start with you, Councilmember Anstad.
I've not had any ex parte communications concerning this specific property. I have talked in the past concerning other issues with the Old Agora Architectural Committee, but not specifically about this piece of property. So I haven't had any conversations around that. I have been to the site in January when we first reviewed. I was also there before as well, so I know all about the site. But I've not talked to any of the other parties specifically about this case.
Thank you. Mayor Protim Sylvester?
I have spoken to staff within the last week. And also within the last week, I revisited, I did go in January and look at the site. I went back again this week and looked at it again.
Thank you. Councilmember Klein Lopez?
No ex parte communications, but I, as I mentioned, I did re-watch some of the hearings. I did drive by the the site again this week. And we received, I think, I think we all received an email from the applicant with some pictures that I think were familiar to us, but did not respond. Thank you.
Thank you. And my ex parte was, I drove by the site for the January 2024 hearing. I re-watched the 2020 city council hearing, which was painful to see because it was during COVID, but we got through it. And then I watched the January 2024 hearing. I did receive an email from Mr. Aurora, and I responded, I'll see you next week. And I think that I received an email from George Coleman that may have been for comments or may have been an email with photographs. I I can't quite remember if that was comments for the hearing that may, are in the record or whether it was just, it was similar, but I don't recall whether or not it was an actual email. Other than that, I've had no other ex parte communications to disclose. So now that the public hearing is open, I will now defer to the applicant. You and or your representatives will have a total of 15 minutes for your presentation. Please adjust the microphone and watch for the red light on the podium. The city clerk will let us know when one minute remains on the timer so that you may write, wrap up your comments. So please, thank you.
Thank you.
Set up the microphone that it's comfortable for you.
That's fine. So as I do the presentation, the the PowerPoint presentation is on the wall here. Next slide, please. So just to run the, back to the history of this whole thing is the first submission was back in 1989. And I think I wrongly say approved. It was entitled, that's the new word that I heard from the city staff. And then, oh, no, let me take you back. Sorry. The first, the, this lot has had two prior approvals of houses. One was back in 1989 and one was back in 2008. We, when we purchased the property, we did get the plans that were approved back in 2008. We could have proceeded with that and resubmitted for approval. The only problem was it was totally staggered, broken up where the house went. Garages where the current house, proposed house is with two-story structure there with the two bedrooms above. And then it connected to entry, which was one story higher on the hillside. And then the kitchen meant another one story higher. And then the living room went another story higher where currently we proposed the horse area to be. So it was kind of very staggered, did not work for our our way of life. And and as I'm getting older, I'm 71 now. I was wondering if someday if I have to go down and put the trash bins and have to go all the way from the master bedroom to the street and come back, I would probably retire. So we had to retire that proposed design and start afresh new for for a design. So in in 2020, as as Mayor Weber, you recall, you had proposed that, okay, maybe a different structure compared to what we had proposed at that time. It would be better if you do one-story front, two-story back. And that's what we had come back with back in January of 2024, after taking a break from the the COVID period and slowing down the process because no workers were available to continue our architecture work and civil work and so on. In the 20, January 2024, what I understood, and I'm trying to accommodate every comment I hear and see if we can make it better, make it more inclusive and and take expert, because you guys have seen hundreds of plans over last two, three, four decades. Ms. Weber's been there for a long time. So reading behind the scene from the January 2024 hearings, I understood that Councilmember Klein Lopez wanted the house to be smaller because she made a comment that it's still the same-sized house and it's still at the same distance from the street. So initially, we proposed a little different structure where you could push part of the front of the house to the back, but that did not work, and that's what asked, made me ask for an extension because we ran late and first going through a different design and getting too many comments and figuring out possibly it's not going to work. Even if you kept massaging that, it probably would take a year to come up with the right mix of things. So we went back to the old design that we had proposed back in January 2024. And what we did was basically make the house smaller and push the house back from the street to to accommodate the comments. Next slide, please. So now the new house is a reduced residence size. So initially, when we had first started back in 2018 and 2019 before getting and up to the point of almost getting the, and getting the tilement and wanting to submit to the planning commission, the house at that time was 4680 square feet. But then we got the comments internally that probably planning commission will not accept it. I mean, you need to reduce it below 4,200, so we had dropped it to 4160 square feet. And now presently, it's at 3620 square feet. So it's about 15.5% smaller house than the last proposal was and about almost 30% smaller than the first proposal that we had submitted. Also, we increased the setback, as I said, by 28%. So the front door of the house now, the residence portion, is 33 feet from the street. And the living room goes down to 32 feet. And then the office area, so there's no family in the front office area, is back to 33 feet from the street again. And the reduced mass and bulkiness is by reducing the depth of the house. And that comes from squeezing in, pushing it from the front and cutting down the rear patio area because the retaining walls come up in the rear and and reducing the square footage. Next slide, please. So as you can see, the, just to kind of give you an overview, the left side is the is the oldest proposal back in 2020. The right side, top one, was what we proposed back in January 2024. And just to point out that the bottom one is same scale as the top one is. So the height is reduced and the width of the house is reduced compared to the upper one. So the upper right side is what we had proposed in January 2024. And now is the smaller profile, lower profile, this time around to propose. Next slide, please. So the, looking at the renderings, basically, as I'd mentioned, the garage width is 31 feet. Home width is only 41 feet now, which is only like four-car garage width of a house equivalent to four-car garage. It's not really a large presence in the front of the house. And of course, the distance of the garage remains the same. And that becomes a problem to push it back because of the slopes required to get there. And the driveway slope requirements from the CDR, that needs to be 5% at the entry to the road and 5% to the garage entry, and in between has to be somewhere about 15%. So we are stuck with not pushing the garage back because that would create different slopes and has caused some issues. But the front door, as I said, is about 33 feet and the height has been reduced to 26 feet 10 inches. Next slide, please. So this is what it would look like from the back. So there's a little bit of the retaining wall shows at the back. The, another change that we made was all the windows are black aluminum windows. So it has a less kind of dominating appearance to the landscape, so it's more subdued appearance to the structure. Next slides, please. And this would be from the, looking from the east side. So the, on the left, behind the house, you could see the two retaining walls that come down. And and the the house is at 33 feet, as I said, height being 2610. Next slide, please. And this would be from the west side, looking at the house. Next slide, please. So this, I kind of took a a step to kind of look at what our neighborhood is. And all I can comment is that in in the whole Lapworth Balkans fairway enclave that we have, currently, as we sit at 3620 feet, almost all houses, except two houses, almost all houses are larger than this. The only two houses that are smaller, one was built in 1961 that doesn't even have a garage. That is next to our home, future home, and the one across from us, and that is about 3,000 square foot. And that was built in 1970. Anything that was built after that for the last 54 years has been larger than 3620 square feet. So it would be probably the smallest house built in that enclave in last 50-plus years. Next slide, please. The, one of the comments I wanted to share was the the character of a neighborhood. Can you give me the next slide, please? So basically, the one on the top left side is the, it's two houses east of our home, which is a two-story structure, larger structure, 5874 square feet. And the one on the right side is two houses down on the right side, on the, on the west side of our future home. And that is 5,672 square feet. So that's kind of where we are sitting on the two sides. We'll be in the, in between the two homes. But our home is only 3620 compared to them being over 5,500 square foot each. Next slide, please. And I wanted to share, another slide is that there are other homes, and both of these homes are, the the one on the left side is about 3,800 square foot and the one on the right side is about close to 4,000 square foot. That they are, there are other homes that are two-story, sitting very close to the street, larger, bigger than than our proposed structure. So we are actually somewhat more subdued compared to these two examples. Next slide, please. And and I just want to show that the one on the top left is how you can look at the SUV sticking out of the wall on the right side of the house. That means they have very short driveway. That means either they are exactly at 25 feet, the house at 25 feet from the street or or is breaching the front setback. And you can see the bottom one is definitely the two cars sticking out into the street. Tells you that the driveway is very small. That means that structure is very close to the the street rather than being much farther back. So that's just odd examples. Next slide, please. Oh, and this this house is kind of interesting that this was built within the last two years. There's a house, the bigger one on the back side, that we would see on the top of the picture on the left side. So that is definitely farther than 25 feet. But then there's a part of the structure that is built right on driver, and that's literally five feet from the fence. And so there have been examples where houses have been much closer to the street than what we are proposing. We're trying to stick to at least 25 feet. In fact, garage being 26 and house being 33, we're kind of doing well at that. Next slide, please. And that would be all my presentation. Again, I would like to emphasize that in in that enclave, as I said. For 54 years, there has been no house built that is is smaller than 3620 square feet. So with that said, I I request and I urge, please listen to all the comments and and give us the best opinion. I would like to address a couple of the things that different council members brought up. Mr. Anstad was asking, Councilmember Anstad was asking about the horse area. The, so the slope, I I can tell you because we've been working on it for so long. The slope at the level, the first thing, the the driveway that is easement road that goes to the back half of that easement road is our easement given, given to share for the people with the next door and the one behind. And that slope kind of, that that easement road goes up. And so the access to the horse area will be from that, and it'll be at the same level. The slope where the proposed, not proposed, but the future but the future horse area can be, could be placed is approximately 24% slope. And, and that's where the original 2008 structure had planned that that's where their master bedroom suite would be up there. So it's actually much flatter there. So the places in between the slopes that are a little bit flatter and that's where they had planned the house broken up, going up slowly, slowly. But, so the slope is not 49 and a half percent at that level. It's about 24%. And yes, it would need grading to get down to 10%, what is required for the horse area. However, one more option for the future, somebody who wants to have it, we do not plan to have it, is, would be on the west side of the house. Now that the house is much smaller, there's ample space on the, on the west side of the house within the lot that one can place, place the horse area there if they choose to. But then they will have to come back and ask for a new, new proposal to change the location, proposed location, et cetera.
Pardon me, we're at one minute.
Just comment one more to, to Proton Sylvester that you had brought up on the distances. So the distance of the garage is 26 feet, house at 33 feet, living room gets down to 32 feet, so it's pulled out one front. And it's purposely done that way so it doesn't look like a flat home, a little bit in and out. But the second story is approx, another seven feet pushed back because that's where the wall is and tall slopes come out to be. For the comments on, Mayor Buckley's comment on, on the ARP, what ARP had proposed was two things. One is the roof structure not be flat and be broken up. What that would do, and we tried to make a lower profile. What would that do is raise the profile because now you're going to have different height of the roof. And, and then you would have to have some, some whatever, the A-shaped roof part of it. And that would raise the profile. They had, which did not make sense to me. And if, if the council members believe that that, I should listen to them and change our plan, I'd be more than willing to do that. And what they were suggesting was the garage, we had one garage, single-car garage is, is A-shaped roof matching with the living room and the, and the, now currently the office area. But they were saying the left side of the garage, that the two-car garage also should have a A-frame top roof. To me, that looked like too much of A-shaped frame in the front. And being a two-car garage, it would need to be much higher A-shaped roof going up. And that would run into the upper level and it'll just create more imposing image of, of the property. So we try to keep it as low and as small as possible.
Thank you. We're going to need you to wrap it up, but I understand what you're saying.
Yes. If, if you think anything we can do further to have it approved, I'd be more than willing to.
Thank you very much. Before we move on to public comments, does any council, council member have any questions of the applicant? Mayor Protem. Mr. Aurora, come on back up to the stand. Thank you.
Are you going to be putting solar panels on that roof?
Say that again?
Are you going to be putting solar panels on the roof?
I didn't understand the question.
Solar panels.
So the, currently, there's no plan for the solar panels. But if there are solar panels, they'll have to go onto the backside because all solar panels have to face the south side. And what you're looking on the front is the north side. So it has to go on the back part of the roof.
Okay, thank you.
It pretty much has to because they have to be south-facing.
Any other questions of the applicant? So I have a question for you.
Yes, please.
And this is the slide I want to look. Well, first of all, the, you talked about the horsekeeping maybe being on the west side of the house. But isn't that where the septic leach field is?
No. So the septic tank goes to the west corner. That's, the septic tank goes in front of the house, in fact. Pretty much in front of the living room is one. This is, the ways the septic system works is they do the tests and figure out what their percolation rate is, means how fast the water can go out. And based on that, they decide what should be the size and, and how many of the tanks do you need? So based on the calculations and measurements, right now, the way it sits is we need, we can have only one, we, we can get away with only one septic tank, but we need to have a second proposed in case the first one fails. Then we have to dig up the second one and put it up. We don't have to put two tanks up front, but we need to have a backup system for that. So right now, the way it is planned is the first septic tank would be somewhere in, in between the wall of the living room and the office area, right in front of that. And it has to be approximately eight feet away from the structure. But right now, currently, the way it is planned, because the house been pushed back, it would be 15 feet from the, from the structure. And it would be 12 feet from the street. That's where the one tank would be. And the, the system that processes it before it sends it to the tank would be right on the corner of the building. So the, all this sewer gets collected in the corner of the building through the pipe comes out to the septic system that processes it and sends it to the tank, which is in front of the house. So there's nothing happening on that side. And that's, you can see some open area of the grass and, and that. So there's ample space there right now.
Okay. And so, because thinking that the septic leach field was over there, what about the front left side of the house? Would you be open to the horsekeeping area being over there?
It, it would be too small for putting it on the, on the left of the house. On the right of the house to the property line is 70 feet right now. So it, and, and of course, the depth of the usable lot right now, before getting into the, the retaining walls, the, yeah, retaining walls, right now approximately, it's 80 feet long. So it's 80 feet by 70 feet approximately what's available to use. So future horse area possibly can go there. Yes, definitely.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Councilmember Anstead?
I just want to follow up on, based on those questions. You're saying that there is enough space there. What I, my specific question that's coming to mind is, if that's the case, then in order to meet the, the requirements for the equestrian area, why didn't you just propose on your plans to put it in that area?
Right. So the, it, it's a very interesting question. Takes me back to, back in 2018. When we had first proposed it, we had proposed it on the, on the west side of the house. And that time, the, our planning department person, planner, planning associate, who's no, no longer here, she had proposed it, why do you want to put it right next to the house? We could horse, horse a smelly and so on. Why didn't you put it up there where the older proposed living room, I mean, master bedroom suite was going to be? Because the access is very easy from there, too. So one of the requirement, it has to have access. So if you put it in the front of the right side, then we have to show another driveway possibly going, either driveway going all around the front of the house to get to the horse area or take another driveway from the west end of the property and take it up to that area. So we had to propose that and there'll be another driveway because the requirement is there has to be a drivable access to the horse area. It was easier on the back because that's where the road is going up there anyways. So within 10 feet from the road is where you can put the horse area.
Thank you. Any further questions? Okay, thank you. And now you're seated. We will now defer to the city clerk for any public comments. If you have something to distribute to the city council, please hand it to our city clerk and do not approach the dais. Public testimony is limited to three minutes per speaker and a speaker's time may not be transferred to another speaker. Madam Clerk?
Written public comments were received by email on or before the 4:00 PM deadline today and forwarded to the city council prior to the meeting and will be part of the permanent record. Public comments were received from the following. Russ Diamond, Oldagora. David Sack, Agoura Hills. John Levin, Agoura Hills. Lori Turner, Agoura Hills. Two from George Coleman, Oldagora. Ken Leonard, Oldagora. And Jess Thomas, Oldagora. We do have speakers this evening. Our first is George Coleman, followed by Lori Turner.
Come on up, Mr. Coleman. Make, make yourself comfortable. I'm pulling the microphone so that you can be heard.
Good evening.
Three minutes to speak, ending when the red light appears on the podium.
George Coleman, 5676 Kaladney. And I'm working on a disability because my hearing aids are not working.
Oh.
So I was, moved my seat to see if I could read lips, if that would make a difference. But anyway, I sent you guys comments and I sent you photographs of the unique property with the slopes and the fact that that particular road is also only 13 feet wide. And it creates quite a difficult situation for the community and what's being built. Personally, when someone buys a piece of land, in my opinion, there's the foresight to take a look at it and see how difficult it's going to be to build their dream house or other structure on a piece of land like that. And my thinking is there shouldn't be a house there larger than 2,500 square feet. And I know the photographs of the surrounding houses were enormous, but this particular location, in an opinion without energy, energy, an engineering or architect, I think it's just too big for the place. I also would hate to see removed the equestrian requirement to Oldagora, the 1,500 square feet. I don't know why we need a three-car garage, which, which implicates the size of the lot. In addition, I have my feelings, based on the length of time that this has taken, that this may very well be a spec house. Meaning it's being built for sale. Three or four months ago, it was being advertised by Nona Green. I spoke to Nona. She said the size was being reduced to 3,000 square feet. Then it was taken off the market. I also have a feeling that based upon where it's situated, there may be a contemplated ADU use down the road. So I have, personally, I'm not speaking on behalf of the Oldagora homeowners in this case. I'm speaking behalf of myself. Jess Thomas has sent in his comments as well. That's one of my concerns. The other concern is what I called in my letter to you guys, influence peddling. Basically, I've heard stories where 12 letters went out to the local residents. And I don't know if this is an impact on the approval of a house or not, but there was an offer made of approximately $100,000. In addition, when the contract is working there to do some hardscape and landscaping at $8,000 per house. And that makes me wonder whether this is a person that's going to live there or is very anxious to build something to sell. So there's, and, and it's just a little bit more complicated than an ordinary struc-
Thank you.
I rest my case.
Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Lori Turner, followed by Brant Turner.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Lori Turner. I live at 6001 Lapworth Drive in Oldagora. I was hoping that the applicant would have listened to the concerns and the suggestions that the city council presented at past hearings. Unfortunately, I do not see any changes that really address these issues. The proposed residence is still two stories. It's very boxy-looking. It towers close to the narrow rural road and simply does not belong on this steep hillside. Also, I'd like to say a word about the rendition. I've attended a lot of these meetings. I've lived in Oldagora for 35 years and I've seen these renditions before. They do not speak well to what the actual house is going to look like or the space between. It looks like this has a long driveway with a lot of landscape, but really, it's very close to the road. So I would, I would advise you to ignore the renditions. Oldagora residents take seriously the responsibility to preserve our historic rural nature of our equestrian community. The Oldagora overlay was designed to clarify the preservation of the character of Oldagora. We look to the Planning Commission and to you, the city council, to understand this shared vision for our unique neighborhood. I urge you once again to deny this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Brant Turner, followed by John Levin.
Hello, my name is Brant Turner. I live at 6001 Lapworth Drive. First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Aurora for pointing out some of the mistakes we've made in approval of housing, especially on Foothill, two of the examples that he laid up there. I was going to take pictures of those houses and bring them tonight to show you because they are about 26 feet from the road. Now, I'm not really good with words, so I'm just going to try to lay this out as easy as I can, but I'm going to need a little participation from everybody. Mayor Weber, you would be the side of Balkans Road, all right? My wife, who is raising her hand now, as instructed, she is at the front of the house, okay? That's how far away you two are. That's how far the road is from the house. Now, I got here early. If you look behind me, you'll see an exit sign. The bottom of that exit sign over the, over that door is 10 feet high, okay? Now, if you can't imagine, go up another 10 feet. And if I remember correctly, you go up another 10 feet, you're getting pretty close to those windows. You're not there yet. This house is going to be 27 and a half feet high. So can you imagine another seven feet on top of that? That's difficult. You're there. And if you look right up there to the top of where these beams come together, that's not even 27 feet. So that's what you're going to be looking at when you drive down Balkans Road. So, several years from now, when you're driving down Balkans Road and you look over there and you see that house, I hope you can say, damn, I'm glad I approved that house. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is John Levin, followed by Russ Diamond.
Hi. I'm a little hoarse, but a little hoarse, it's kind of. The, the rendering, it just so, I, I said it last time when we were here. It's just so not, it's like Fantasyland. And I couldn't see it that well from over there, but it's, it's, it still looks weird or it doesn't fit in. I know all of you have gone out there and looked at what's going on. And there's a reason why no one's built a house there because it's a, I think it's the most difficult lot in, in Oldagora. And just because there are other houses that are much bigger, that doesn't mean they, I'm sure they're all okay. Most of them are okay. You guys have, you guys haven't, but the Planning Commission has made some mistakes and they've admitted it. But that has nothing to do with the spot that they're building a house on. It's just, it's just way too big for that lot. It's way too big. I also, when they put the ad in, in the paper to sell it several months ago, they had room for a big horse thing. And then they had a swimming pool. I wonder if, if, if that's, that's realistic also. I, you know, I just, it's just not right for that spot. You know, it's, 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 it's way out of whack for the, for the rendering. Especially with, I don't know if it matters at all, but you know, there's going to be a 6,000-plus house right on top of that pretty soon, which you guys probably know about. So that's pretty much it. I, it's, it's too big, doesn't fit there. Also, I must say that it's going to be difficult to build there at any time because his, the street is only 13 feet, like George said. And I don't know how they're going to get trucks in without getting on my property and tearing up my property or even fitting on it, you know, parking and all the big trucks. So I don't know how, how they're going to do that either. And I, like I said, you, you guys have all been out there. And it's a very, it gets narrower and narrower and there's nothing but houses. So I, I hope you guys don't let this house be built, okay?
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Russ Diamond.
Now, is that from the street level, or from the grade level of the home? I think he said it was the grade level of the home. And it slopes, if you take a look at that driveway, it slopes up a bit, so it'll be a lot more than just 27 feet. And it is foreboding over the street, especially that 13-foot street is very, very narrow. And the topography, you know, there is no possible way you could get an equestrian on where they're proposing it there. It's just, it's not feasible. And there's a lot of vegetation, there's oak trees, there's all kinds of other things in that area. It's only an equestrian area on a set of plans, but not in reality. There is, as a builder myself, and someone who supplies a lot of builders, I'm in a lot of different developments, there is a way to creatively build that structure on that property, but it has to be a one-story or a split level. Now, the home, it would have been much smarter to stage it more towards the west, because there's a driveway that slopes up, and it wouldn't have interfered with putting an equestrian right across the easement driveway, where there's another equestrian space. So that would have been the most feasible way. But 2,500 to 3,000 square foot, if you did a split, that's probably the maximum that that lot could support. Now, the argument that other homes in the area have similar, or approvals have had similar flaws, distance from the street, questionable setbacks, and overboding height, are just not a justification to override the wrongs of past planning commission, past planning commission decisions. As stated, each project needs to be judged on its own merits, and without compounding past bad decisions. And so, I did go through the area too, and the homes that are closest to the street usually are one street, are one story. Now, the ones that aren't, that he pointed out, and there are some others that probably were influenced, you know, because of the nature of who built the homes in the, at the time, you know, probably were, had a lot of influence over those that were making the decisions. I just think that, you know, this project is just not-
For this lot, so.
Thank you.
We have no further speaker cards.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'll now defer to, you know what, I'm going to, let's take a five-minute break, or let's see, it's about 10 to 8. I need a little break, so, five, six minutes? Does that sound good to everybody? Before we move on to rebuttal, we have another public speaker, so I'm going to defer to the city clerk to call him up.
Yes, if you'd like to come up to the podium? Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
I'm Walt Donald Chandler, and I'm a neighbor at 5,800 Lapworth Drive. And I did write a letter, but it apparently didn't get added to the book. So I think the current proposal is very comparable to the original proposal that was rejected for aesthetics and fit to the site. And it seems that the new proposal may meet the minimum 25-foot setback, but the two-story tall structure will loom imposingly over the street. And I do think the house is too large for the site, not necessarily for the neighborhood, but for the site. The project was already rejected, but the owner developer keeps bringing it back, in addition to being too large to the tall structure. I note the following: There's no obvious approach to the equestrian area. I'm not an expert, but I question if there's sufficient space for the proposed septic, which is also right near the street, and has little or no room for expansion. How will it smell to those walking by? And the runoff drainage, it looks like it's all going to run out on Balkans, and that would exacerbate a problem that is already there with drainage down Balkans that has eroded the road severely, and those of you that have driven out there have seen that. The builder has offered several neighbors, including me, $8,000 worth of construction or home improvement work if the project is approved. The offer was made in a letter, which I brought with me if someone wants to see it. The proposal, to me, seems too much like a bribe, although it wasn't explicitly that, soliciting me to keep objections quiet. And the ethics of the offer are troubling, and I feel it's underhanded. Money should not speak so loudly in our city, and specifically, my opinions, that I don't think any of you are for sale. So, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay. So now, since we have no further speakers, I'll defer to Mr. Aurora to come back up, and you have five minutes for rebuttal.
Thank you for all the comments from all my, all my future neighbors. Two things I want to say is that there's a requirement by the, I believe, city, county, et cetera, that all roads minimum have to be 20 feet. So actually, the Balkans Drive at that place is 20 feet, 22 feet, actually. And the side easement that would take you to the horse area is also 20 feet, 10 feet from our property, and 10 feet from the property that's behind. So it's required that it be 20 feet. So when people make comments on 13 feet and 12 feet, it's not correct. It cannot be correct. In our plans, there are, there's one sheet that has all the requirements that would be implemented, and the civil plans, it says that after the construction is completed, the Balkans from the fairview all the way to the end of our property would be redeveloped, will be repaved. So if there's any construction damage to the street, it would be fixed. So that's one comment. The second comment that I would like to make is, if we live there, my wife, every Christmas, makes Christmas cookies of eight different kinds, about 30 in a box, and gives it to all the neighbors. And if we don't live there, I just don't know how to embrace them, because I'm not there. We have Christmas party, all are invited. If we have, like, a graduation party, one time, I saw many graduate from that school, we had graduation party, invited all our neighbors. I'm just trying to offer that if my contractors are there, they can help do some of hardscape, landscape work for them, just to show a gesture that I want to be their friends, and I want them to feel us all together as one community, as one neighborhood. We all live together, we're together, we share together. Contractors are there, they can do some work. So yes, there was a comment about, you know, while the contractor's, they can do some work for them. And that's just a peace offering to make it all inclusive, us and them together as one group of neighbors. That's all I would say. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So now, before I close the public hearing, does any council member have any further questions of the applicant or staff? Councilmember Klein Lopez?
Thank you. Mr. Aurora, can you confirm, did you have the property for sale? And if so, were you thinking of giving up on this, or what was-
Say that one more time.
Did you have the property for sale recently?
So that comment, no, I haven't had it since previous to the last meeting.
Okay, because I asked you that same question last time, and I wanted, I was going to-
Right, so, no, it has not been on the market ever since.
Okay, thank you.
And the fence has been removed, by the way. Last time, one of the neighbors commented that that's a very ugly sight, so the fence has also been removed from-
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Aurora or for staff? I have a couple of questions for staff.
Please.
So you can go ahead and sit down. Thank you. One of the speakers, our last speaker, mentioned something about drainage out onto Balkans, and I'm just wondering if you can clarify for me what that is?
Denise Thomas, Community Development Director. All of our projects, when they're submitted, are routed to various agencies and internal departments, including the Public Works Department. There wouldn't, our standards, and I don't want to speak for the Public Works Director, if she comes back in, she can answer, but we don't permit sheet flow of water at all. So as part of his review, his engineering plans would have to be reviewed- So as part of his review, his engineering plans would have to be reviewed during the building permit process, and he would not be able to increase flows, if I understand correctly, beyond what they are today. So he has to capture water, and his development can't increase or make the situation worse. When the Public Works Director is available, you can ask her, and she can correct me if I'm incorrect. So he wouldn't be able to just drain straight onto the street.
Okay, great, thank you. And then the other question I had was regarding, the applicant had talked about the septic leach field on the west side, and just so I'm clear, I thought that there could be no structure within a certain amount of feet of that leach field. Am I wrong?
The septic field was reviewed by LA County Health, and LA County Health has given the septic field their clearance. They'll go through a detailed review after his approval, when his final plans are drawn, and they'll verify that it is okay. They are the ones who would identify if something is too close or not permissible in relation to the leach field. And he's gotten preliminary review on that, and he's gotten an okay after he gets, if he were to get approved, he would submit his building plans, and he would go through a final review.
And if the applicant were to move the horsekeeping area over to that west part, would he have to have another review by the county to make sure that it was a proper placement of it, or the distance from the septic leach field?
He would. Our recommendation would not be to have horsekeeping areas in the vicinity of the leach field. And LA County Health has indicated that they do have a minimum setback requirement from the leach field. So when he went for his final review, they would determine at that time whether or not that proposed location is acceptable to them.
Great, thank you.
Jessica's back.
Okay, I see here. Ms. Forte, I was just wondering, I don't know if you were here when the last speaker had talked about drainage onto the street, and I was wondering if you could clarify that for me?
I apologize for being in the back. The site drainage, I mean on the site, because they have the driveway that's at, I think it's a 5% slope, it would flow onto the street, but most of the, you know, storm water would hit like native land and should dissipate. These roads, I'm not very familiar with because they are private, so I haven't seen the storm drainage plans that go along the road, if they have any subsurface storm drains or not. But yeah, most of this would be sheet flow, and it's been evaluated by Kimley Horn.
And so if it's been evaluated, do you need to see anything further, or if it was already evaluated, would you not look at that issue?
That would all be looked at further with final building permits.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great, thank you. I think that's the only questions that I have. Any further questions? Mayor Protem?
I would just like to clarify, I know you just said it's a private road. Do you know what the width of it is?
My understanding is it is 13 feet in width, but that's from the applicant. Do you have, you're not clear. It's a very narrow road, and it falls off to kind of a slope to the, I guess it's the north side across the road.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other further questions? Okay, then we will now move on. I'll now close the public hearing, and we'll move on to deliberations. I'm going to start with you, Councilmember Anstead, on this one.
This is, I mean, it definitely presents a complicated case. You know, the argument that the appellant made concerning the fact that there's other homes in the area, you know, I actually, that was one argument that I felt pretty strongly on, and I think the more I thought about it, and I actually also going out to the site as well, is this property is different than the other property sites that are located in Oldagora that have bigger homes. And that's, so I mean, I get the point that there is bigger homes in Oldagora, and I have a full feeling that you would like to build the same homes, and but, this property is not like those other properties. It's a very unique property. It is, we've talked about it numerous times, that's why this is the third time that we're now still hearing this, is that that property has such a huge slope in the back of it, and so you only have a very small workable area that you're talking about putting a home on. And so you're trying to figure out, like, how am I going to do that with the footprint that I have and make it a home that I want to live in? And then you're also dealing with the Oldagora overlay. And I, for one, take that overlay pretty seriously, and I know we always have here in the city of Agora. And I would, there would have to be some really big compelling reason, like you couldn't build even a 1,500-square-foot house in order for me to say, well, there's some compelling reason why I should waive that right to have that horse kind of keeping area that's in the Oldagora plan. So I don't see any reason, I haven't seen any proof here tonight, and I don't see any reason why to waive that requirement here tonight. So that definitely needs to be there. And then the place that you've currently designated for the horsekeeping area doesn't meet the standards, as you said, it doesn't meet the 10% slope. So I feel compelled that until you designate an area that meets that requirement, and that may require you to adjust where the house sits on the property, that may require you to adjust the size of the house in order to fit it on the property, but I think that you need to go back and take a closer look at that in order to meet the requirements. And I feel like that that element has not been met, and it affects a lot of the different findings, the hillside ordinance finding, it affects the site plan finding, and the conditional use permit. And so I find that I cannot make the findings based on that specifically. And I think that is affected by the size of the house. I mean, obviously, if you reduce the number of garages, if you lower the amount of square footage in the house, that's going to then create your area where you can put the horse designated area, and you're going to have a home I think that everybody's more happy with, and that fits in to the community. And the community's happy to have you as a neighbor. So with that, I will say that I can't make the findings and go forward from there.
Thank you, Councilmember. Mayor Protem Sylvester?
I agree with a lot of what my fellow council member just said. When I went up to the property, it is a beautiful site, and to have a two-story house that close to the road, and when you're standing on the road, as one of our speakers said this evening, you know, you're looking straight up, and it's just building. And I don't think you've been able to, because of what the fire department said to about, you know, where it has to be on the lot to meet their requirements, I don't think a two-story house is going to work on that property. And it's not, we're still dealing with mass and bulk just looming over the street. And even looking at the rendering, I mean, I went up there and I looked, and when we look at this rendering, the north view, that's not what we're going to have. It's going to be like twice that height. So I think that's a little, I mean, it's good because it shows us the design of the house, but it doesn't show the true stature of how tall it will be. And I think it's incompatible with LU 7-1, 7-2, 7-7, 7-10, LU 8, 1, 2, and 3, LU 9-1, and LU 10-1. I mean, I can read those off if we like, but those are the ones that, do you want me to read them off, or?
A city attorney, does she need to read them off? She's named the actual LU sections.
Yeah, I mean, I will defer to staff, but I think it's to staff's benefit that each of the council members would state exactly which finding. And maybe it would be helpful for staff to put the findings up on the screen, so you can go through and say, okay, I can't make certain CUP finding or SPR findings. That will be much better for the record, thank you.
Thank you.
So shall I read them off? What would you like me to do?
And can staff put that up for us? If you have a slide that, which shows the general plan, it's the general plan findings. I don't think it's a general plan. So it's just the CUP finding? Well, there's the hillside, the CUP, the architectural...
If I could, hi.
Go ahead.
So shall I read them?
Well, let's...
It would be, if we could, and I'm sorry to have to do this, we need to know why you can't make the findings. So if we could go back to Councilmember Anstead, you identified the finding you cannot make and why specifically you can't, because we're going to use that information to draft the resolution, and we aren't permitted to guess.
If I may, in the staff report, starting with page 5, it lays out all the entitlements that are listed, and the findings and the code requirements that apply. So you can say, okay, I'm looking at 9673.2E, I can't make finding 1 or 2 for these reasons. That would be extraordinarily helpful to staff, thank you.
You got it. So if I go back, if I go back to my, should I go back to my opinion, Mayor?
Yes, why don't you go back to yours and go ahead and run through yours, and then that'll give the Mayor Protem some time to do that.
Sure. So, I mean, I'll just go through, the CUP was 9673.2E, and again, all this one, and then the hillside ordinance, which is 9652.15A, and the site plan review, which is 9677.5. They all have elements of the meeting the requirements of either the local community or the Oldagora, or our standards, which is the Oldagora overlay. And I believe that the fact that the horse area currently where it's designated violates all three of those, because it's not a proper designation, doesn't meet the requirements of the horsekeeping area. And so I can't make the findings on any of those ordinances. So those are the three that I'm basing my decision on.
Mayor Protem, are you ready?
Well, I would include what Councilmember Anstead said, and then I would add that goal LU 7, livable and quality neighborhoods, neighborhoods that provide a variety of housing types, densities in design, and a mix of uses and services that support the needs of their residents. So LU 7-1 discusses densities and character. I can't, I don't believe this project has taken that into consideration, so I would, you know, deny it on the density. L 7-2, character and design, the building form, scale, massing, and relationship to street frontages, I don't think it meets that, and the property setback. Let's see, what did I say? LU 7-7, environmental setting, the preservation of scenic and visual resources, I don't think it meets that. LU 7-10, regulate the design and setback of the housing in areas where different housing product and density abut one another to assure smooth transitions in scale and form. I don't think it fits with the properties on either side. And then goal LU 8, designed to respect their environmental setting. LU 8-1 promotes and maintains the integrity of Oldagora neighborhoods, and for their low-density, large estates. But on this property, it cannot hold a large building and the rustic character and non-urban infrastructure. I don't think it meets that. LU 8-2, respect the characteristics that distinguish Oldagora, including its topography, parcel sizes, housing scale and form. Again, I have the problem with the scale and form. LU 8-3, buildings be located scaled, minimize grading to the maximum extent possible. Structures shall be integrated into the hillside, this is not integrated into the hillside. Preserve view sheds and natural ridge lines, so I would, I can't make that finding. LU 9, maintenance of the identity, scale, and character of the residential neighborhoods. LU 9-1, so we need to differentiate by topography, parcel size, housing scale, and form. Again, it's too big for that space. Is that, have I got it? No, let me find, where's LU 10? Okay, character and design, sensitive site planning and architectural design that mitigates the scale of larger buildings through careful use of building massing and modulation, setbacks, articulation, and et cetera, et cetera. I cannot make that finding, so I would base it on those. Does that give you enough?
Hello, I'm Denise Thomas. For some of them, yes. When you say, the way that the resolution has to be written, we have to say, whereas LU whatever requires the following, the city council finds this is not done, we can't just say, I can't make the finding. So for the ones that you said, I can't make the finding, if you could tell us why. So there were three that you had mentioned where you said, I can't make the finding, and there was one where you said, it didn't make the setback. That would be inconsistent with the plans. Do you still want us to write it as though they aren't meeting the setback? So I need clarity.
Yes, I mean, I know legally they're meeting the setback, but in standing on the street and looking up at this huge, you know, tall two-story house, I don't think it meets the, so which one would that be? So, you want me to go back through it again, from the beginning? Sorry.
You don't have to do all of them. It's okay. You don't have to go back through all of them.
Because all of them are saying the natural land, the, you know, setback on the hillside, maybe not the setback on the street, but going up, you know, blending in with the slope, it's not doing that.
I believe we can capture that, thank you.
Okay. So I think I've muddled through it.
You have done a good job of muddling through. And what we, the city attorney and I were just speaking, and we thought what we would do is we would finish the deliberations, and then before each and every one has to get through the weeds, and then we can...
Oh, did I do it too soon?
No, 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 no. It's fine. And so we're just now, we'll go on to Councilmember Klein Lopez, and then if we still have some questions from Denise, we can deliberate and work together on it.
Thank you. Before I make my remarks, I'd like to ask my council members a few questions, because what you've both said is 100% different than what you said at the last meeting when we were together, where Councilmember Anstead said he was okay with the size, and he just wasn't okay with the architecture, which had changed, that the applicant had tried to meet the expectations of the HOA and had, that they met every objective standard, that the project does comply. And when Mayor Buckley Weber pressed you, you said you believed 100% that it was in compliance, and that the planning commission made the wrong decision in denying it. Council Mayor Protem Sylvester said it does meet all the requirements, didn't list any of those that you just listed. It meets the building code, it meets the hillside, it meets the equestrian, and that you cannot deny for any other reason than your subjective opinions. So I guess my question to you both is, why did you say that? And now that we are looking at a smaller house, a house that is 500 less square feet, it's 80 square feet less on the garage, the front porch is smaller, the setback is further back, and it's way under our allowable coverage setbacks, height, and floor area ratio, it's got a 5.8% lot coverage of a 25% max, and it's 3620 square feet, which is, you know, oh yeah, 500 square feet less. How can you say that this smaller house is all of a sudden not, you're not able to make the findings when you found every one of them, the bigger house, nine months ago?
Shall I answer first? Shall I answer first? I, when I went up there this week, and I spent like half an hour, just, I didn't just drive by, I got out of my car, I walked around, I sat in my car at the bottom of the hill, you know, opposite the lot, and I just started to think about if I lived next door, how I would feel.
But it's not about feelings.
No, I know. But it's about, so I went back in, and I looked at what you had said from our last meeting in January, and I, about the character and the design, and I realized I was wrong, and I made a mistake. And I'm, I can, I have time to rectify and reverse my opinion. And that's what I'm doing. I think I'm allowed to.
I'm asking, I'm asking how you, I'm asking both of you, how...
That's how I came to that conclusion.
Okay, so that's what you have to say. And what about you, Councilmember Anstead?
I think this is kind of a little, a little out of character, but I'll be glad to answer your question. First of all, the only thing I talked about was the equestrian area. And so what my thoughts on the equestrian area are, is that it basically is not, whenever I look at it very closely at where it's at, I feel it's not a proper place for the equestrian area, and I'm not willing to give a variance to do away with it. So that's completely what I based my opinion on, and that's the only thing that I'm discussing.
So you think the Planning Commission made the right decision, then? Last time you said the Planning Commission made the wrong decision.
I think that the equestrian area is not appropriate where it's currently designated when I took a closer look at it. And so that's, that's what I think. So that's all I have to say on it.
So if the equestrian area were moved, for example, to the front, would you...
If he came back, if some, again, this is hypotheticals, but basically he would have to come back with a plan that has the equestrian area that meets the Agora Hills overlay requirements, then I feel that he would be in compliance. That's, that's, that's my feeling, and that's how I voted.
Okay, but I asked, and it does meet the, it does meet it, right?
The equestrian area, does it meet?
Does it meet the requirements of the, of the minimum requirements of?
The, they would have to grade the site, but once a grading permit was issued and they graded the site, it would be compatible, it would be consistent with the code. Councilmember Lopez, you want to share your deliberations with us?
I'm, I'm very confused as to how this whole thing turned on its head, because I also, so I wrote down specifically what you all said, and so that's just word for, were your, your words. I wrote that from the tape. My words was that I had a hard time finding certain findings, which was compatible use, the hillside, natural, biotic, open space with a complement of character, and the, the horse property, the horse area was, I was worried about that. And so I actually never finished deliberating, because I was waiting to see what our mayor at the time said, and that's when we decided to continue the, the hearing until now. So I feel like, and I visited the property as well, and I drove by so many homes that were larger and closer to the street, also on very difficult properties. I think that the, trying to say this the right way. In 2020, the beef was not the size, it was the architecture. When Mr. Aurora came before the, this body in 2020, it was about the architecture. He went back, he changed some of it, he didn't change all of it. We did say back in 2020 on the council that we thought it was too big. He came back, it was not particularly smaller, and that was a sticking point for me. Now it's smaller. It's 500 square feet smaller in square footage. The garage is 80 square feet smaller, the front porch is smaller, the setback, it's a little bit more. It is a very, very difficult property. He doesn't want to build a one-story house. And I, I wish it were a one-story house, but he wants to build a two-story house. It is way under our allowable metrics in terms of coverage, setbacks, height, and floor area ratio. It's somewhat infill. There are homes all around it. It's not undeveloped area. It's not backed up to open space. It's open, got a hill, but it's, it's surrounded by houses. It is one of the smallest, it would be one of the smallest houses in the area. He tried to redesign things, which we asked him to do, which was denied by the fire department. And the homeowners association came and looked at it, and again, they were fine with the original size way back when, just the style. They reviewed and no response. So I feel like this is Groundhog Day, where Old Agora does not give the response until we're all up here on appeal, which is not fair to the applicant. We cannot deny everything, and we cannot keep moving the goalposts. He's done what we've asked him to do. And one thing is, you know, we cannot deny a house based on speculation that someone is going to sell it and someone else is going to move in. That is flat-out discrimination. I hope you understand that. We can't dictate who can live in the house, who can sell someone's own property. I don't want these houses to flip. I don't want them to be used as sober living homes. I don't want the same things. But we can't deny a project because we're worried he's going to sell it. That is not legal. And all of your homes were constructed on these roads. So, you know, again, just like I said last time, the argument that it's a narrow road, or that it's going to be dusty, this and that, you know, that all happened when you had your homes built. So I feel like this applicant has done everything we've asked him. I feel like you're moving the goalposts on him. You had the opportunity to weigh in, and you didn't. And I don't think it's fair. I think it's, I think it's giving Agora Hills a bad name in telling people we want them to live here, and then making it impossible for them to do so. So I actually went through every single one of the findings with the changes I can make them, and I can also count.
Thank you for that. Okay, so I believe, I agree with all of my council members, to be honest. Like Councilmember Klein Lopez says, there's certain things that this body cannot consider, one being whether or not they're selling the property, also that whether or not they, an applicant offers to landscape somebody for something, you know, or to give a gift to one of the neighbors. It's not really, you know, that's really outside of our jurisdiction. Also, we really can't, you know, make a decision on during construction. You know, there's, anything that gets constructed there, whether it's a single story or a two-story or whatever, there's going to be dust, there's going to be dirt, and it's just, you know, hopefully whomever, you know, whatever can happen can happen, and be cleaned up at the end of the day, and be as neat as it possibly can. I also agree with my other council members on the horse property. I can only speak for myself, and I know everybody's getting tired of me saying this, but I served on the Planning Commission for six years. I've been on the city council for 13 years. And in all the years that I've been here, I have never even been asked to make an exemption to the horsekeeping area. And, and I have to be honest that, you know, I've been a big fan of the horsekeeping. I think that's what makes Old Agora particularly different and special, and I'm very proud to have an equestrian community within, within our city. So that causes me not to be able to make some of the findings. Now, I am, I also agree with Councilmember Lopez, like the applicant has reduced the size. I would call it fairly significant. 500 feet, we may, it may not be the color that I like. It may not be, no offense, but my style of house. But I think that he has reduced all of the sides. But what causes me not to make the findings is not about the size anymore, which I had a problem with at the beginning, but I feel a lot of that has been reduced. But the original, what's on the plans as we sit here today, I believe is a horsekeeping area that is not reasonable, it's not feasible, and it'll just never be a horsekeeping area. But I'm not willing to make that waiver. And so in my view, if the applicant wants to come back again, and I know this has been a long ordeal, or work with staff on a different horsekeeping area, and that, you know, a lot of the homes in Old Agora have their horsekeeping areas in the front of the house. And I'm guessing, I don't know for sure, that this is exactly why they have horsekeeping areas in the front of the houses, because that's where the level area is, to have a proper horsekeeping area. The only properties really left in Old Agora are tough properties. There's no doubt about it, that anything that's on a level, you know, is probably already developed. And so I'm not willing to sit up here and kind of start that precedent, that while I'm on the council, that we would waive the requirement of a horsekeeping area. And where that comes into in the findings, it comes into the, under the CUP, it's, it's number one, the proposed use is, there would need to be a finding, and this is what I can't find, is the proposed use is consistent with the intent and purpose of this Article nine, the goals and objectives of the general plan, and any applicable specific plan, and the purposes of the district in which the use is located. It's an equestrian, you know, it just is. Now, I think that the city of Agora Hills is pretty lenient with the fact that we don't require people to take that land and actually build an equestrian area. But I still think it needs to be reserved space. Now, if you were standing here, and you were telling me that you've put the, the equestrian area, but you can only squeeze out 1,400 square feet instead of 1,500 square feet, I would consider that. I really would. But I just can't have it on the slope like that next to the driveway. It'll never really be a horsekeeping area. In, on the hillside, it's number, in my opinion, it's number four, which is, I can't make the finding that the proposed development will complement the community character and benefit current and future community residents, because I don't think it complements the community character, which is, in my opinion, an equestrian area. I mean, it's, it's called out as an equestrian area. It just is what it is. You know, there's still horses there. I mean, there's, you know, we hope that the horses will remain, you know, as things are going with state mandates. We never know. But like I said, while I'm on the council, I'm going to fight for the equestrian area. On the hillside, I think I just said that one was, I can't make finding number four. On the site plan, I can't make finding D, that the proposed use will comply with each of the applicable provisions of this chapter, except for approved variances or modifications, because in municipal code section 9592, it talks about the development standards, and it talks about the requirement for, you know, and the overlay for the equestrian area. And then I say that also on site plan review is F, that the proposed use preserves and enhances the particular character and assets of the surrounding area and its harmonious development. And again, this is about the equestrian area. You know, it's, for me, it's, you know, again, you know, the house is large. I would prefer a single-story house, but I think that the applicant's done a pretty good job of reducing down to 3,600 square feet. And it may not be perfect on that lot, but it meets, it substantially meets, really, most of our municipal code, other than the equestrian area. And then lastly, that was site plan review, I think I said F. And then the architectural review is number five, that the proposed use complies with all applicable requirements of the district in which it is located, and all other applicable requirements. It does not meet the equestrian overlay. And, you know, if people have a problem with there being an equestrian overlay in Old Agora, then that's a whole nother matter that can be brought up to the council. But right now it stands. It's stood there for a long time. So, you know, I support it. Also, number one, under architectural view, that the proposed development is consistent with the general plan, any specific plans, and any design standards adopted by the city council. And I don't think it meets that, because it doesn't have a proper equestrian area. Let's see. I can make all of the findings for the oak tree permit. And I think that's about it. And of course, you know, I can count as well, so I don't need to bring this up. But if this project were going to go forward, I would definitely want, under Agora Hills Municipal Code, Section 9673.2E, under the CUP portion, that we would be, per the staff recommendation, that we would be requiring that the lighting be shielded and downward facing to prevent glare and excessive light spillage on adjacent properties. So with that, in case if anybody has different, Councilman, Councilmember Klein Lopez?
So if you're saying that your, your, the bulk of your findings are related to the equestrian area, and Councilmember Anstead is saying that his issue is now the equestrian area, if we, because I don't want him to have to, if it's 2-2, it doesn't pass. So I would not want him to go through the effort of trying to change and get the equestrian area down on the flat if it's going to end up being 2-2. So my question for you all is, if he were to come back with an equestrian area that were more realistic, because he doesn't have to develop it, he just has to have the plan, you could still plant whatever you want on it, right? You don't have to develop it as a, as an equestrian. But if he were to move it, would the council then be more amenable to the findings?
I can speak for myself that I would be more amenable to the findings, and I would work with staff, because I wouldn't, you know, even though I said that I would consider it, if you came back with 1,400 square feet, and the requirement's 1,500 square feet, if you come back with 800 square feet, I would not support that. So I would want you to work closely with staff, again, and see if you can move it. And Councilmember Klein Lopez is exactly right. The front of the house can basically look the same. You don't have to put in the house, the horsekeeping area, but it needs to be a designated area on the property. Councilmember Anstead, do you have anything to add to that?
No, I would agree. I mean, I definitely would agree. I mean, I would have to, if nothing else changed, if the house moved backwards, or, I mean, it would just be, if there was any major changes to what's currently proposed, I would need to look at that again, and also have staff's approval that it met all the requirements. But other than that, that was my biggest issue with the, with the property. So that was it.
Thank you. So, hang on a second. So, just so you all know what we're chatting about, you probably all know this, but I'm not seeking reelection. And so I'm gone in another six weeks, sadly, but it's bittersweet. So we're trying to figure out how, what we can do about that. So just hang on there. We're talking with the city attorney. So just hang on there, we're talking with the city attorney. Mr. Aurora, would you like to, I'm going to reopen the public hearing for a minute, to ask you just, is this something that you would seriously want to undertake, to look to see if you could move the horsekeeping area of the property?
Yes, I think if we can approve it conditionally, subject to me moving the horse facility to the front, and staff approving it and accepting it, based on all the conditions and requirements, I'd be more than happy to do so.
I don't know that we can do that. So let's chat about, here's the difficulty, you know, this is complicated, because we're not sure who's going to win to take my place, but it could potentially be somebody who's already ruled on this in the planning commission, and/or heard, you know, heard it. So it makes it very complicated, and so we need to ask staff, how long, if Mr. Aurora were willing to move the horsekeeping area, when would you have to have something from him? If we were going to do this at the November 13 hearing, you're all invited back for my going away party. It'll be fun.
I can bring it back within a week, because architect has to just move the plans to the front, rather than from the back.
So it's really, let me see what if staff.
It ended up there, because initially, the planning department suggested we better to put it in the back. We're not going to have horses, so it doesn't matter, front or back. And there is ample space, as I said, there's like 70 by 80, so it's 3,500 square feet, and horse facility doesn't need to be that big, based on what I understand.
How big is the horse area going to be?
I believe it's close to 1,000 square foot, 1,200 square, I think 100 square foot.
It's supposed to be 1,500.
1,500 square foot, but we have 80 by 70, so 5,600 square foot.
Oh, okay.
Four times the space, so.
Okay.
Four and a half times the space, so it should be fine.
Okay.
It's just architect has to show it on the plans that get approved.
Right.
If you want to approve it, put it in the board and approve it.
We can't do that.
Subject to them accepting it, I would bring it back.
I don't think we can do that.
Or we can do it, continue to the November 13 meeting, and I would have architect jump on it and get it done.
Mr. Hamburger is checking with staff to even see if they can get it done, so hang on.
I really appreciate it. It's taken everybody so much time, and I feel bad about it, because it's.
It's the process. You have every right to take. Okay.
If we were to make the next meeting, we would need information, I mean, fairly quickly. It's going to take us time, and I have a feeling that, just looking at the plans, and not being a planner, but just from my experience, I don't know that you can just draw it on the plans and make it fit exactly. And I don't, I don't think that our staff would be able to just work and try to guess on a number and bring that back to you. I don't think that's fair to the applicant or anybody. So it may need adjustments to his plan, which, you know, may need, you know, require him to go back to his consultants and whatnot. I don't think it could just be drawn on the paper by just my idea of it.
You mean, it can't be just drawn by the architect?
Correct.
It would need, yeah.
I believe there's a little bit more, there's going to be some adjustments or changes that are probably going to be required, and I don't know how quickly those can be turned around, but we would need those, I mean, we need about two weeks at minimum, and that's really pushing it, to try to get everything prepared.
You know, I am so sorry, but I think we're going to have to take a vote tonight, because I just don't know at this point. Just give us a minute, everybody, we're trying to work it out. Believe it or not, this has actually happened once before, that I know, before I was on the council. Okay.
I really appreciate it.
We have looked at this every which way that we can.
I really do.
And for just a myriad of reasons, you would need to come back at the November 13 meeting.
That'd be perfect.
Which means you really have to submit something to staff by the middle of next week.
Monday.
Yeah. Monday would be great.
I'll have it by Monday.
And then, or, we can take a vote today, and you can, you know, deal with what the vote is.
I think I'll continue us to the next November 13 meeting, and I'll bring the plans to the staff by Monday.
Okay. All right. That's what we will do. So if I can have a motion and a second to continue tonight's public hearing to November 13, do I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Thank you.
City Councilman Chris Ancelos, second.
Great, okay, thank you all.
Thank you so much.
And you should all come, and if you come at 5 o'clock, there's a reception. It's actually going to be a party, so come on by. But that, you know, so if I have a motion and a second, Madam Clerk, can you take a roll call?
Councilmember Anstead?
Aye.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Sylvester?
Aye.
Mayor Buckley-Weber?
Aye.
Mayor Buckley-Weber, you have approval.
Thank you very much, and thank you all for being here.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Aurora, thank you all for being here.
Thanks to all my neighbors, too, for coming and giving their input. It's important for them to give their input.
Absolutely.
Appreciate that.
Thank you. Okay, so now, so now we are going to, oh, I'd like to bring back Councilmember Wolf. Okay, great. Actually, you all may want to stay. The next item. We're good. Welcome back. Okay, our next item is a discussion to consider options and process for amending the Agoura Hills Municipal Code to establish architectural and design requirements for commercial property within the Old Agora Overlay District. I'll now defer to Community Development Director Thomas for the staff presentation.
Good evening, thank you, Mayor, Honorable Counsel. My name is Denise Thomas, I'm the Community Development Director. So at the last city council meeting, we were asked, we were asked to take a look at what it would take to amend the municipal code to create standards for development within the Old Agora community, or commercial district. The brief memo that I provided you for gave you kind of an overview of the time, the approaches, the options you have available. I gave you four, there could be others, or a mixture of them, and I gave you an estimate of time, and I gave you an estimate of value. Please keep in mind that the estimate of value is extremely rough, because we would really need to do a request for proposals to find out what the actual cost would be, and the time would be dependent on an environmental document, if one would be required, and if so, that would also add time and money to the estimates. But essentially, one option would be, option one, would be to do nothing, to continue to apply the standards as a guideline, as we have, as we do every place else in the city, and to continue to do that. That would cost, that wouldn't have a fiscal impact, and it would be immediate. The other option would be to simply amend the code to take the residential standards and apply them to non-residential buildings. The issue with doing that, we could have unintended consequences. First of all, based on conversations that I've had with architects, it's not as simple as just saying, whatever standards you would require for a residential building, you can just apply those to a non-residential building. It would require, it would require kind of review by an architect to determine whether or not it's appropriate to add residential features onto a non-residential building, number one. And two, it would require us to reach out to property owners in, who own property in the commercial district, and have conversations with them to see whether or not that's an issue, and then to find out what the cost associated with doing that is, and whether or not we would be creating, creating a situation where we would slow or chilled the development of those pieces of properties, or receive feedback from those property owners. For those reasons, staff would not recommend just, just adding, and commercial too, to our code. The other two options are viable options. The option three would be for us to empanel some sort of Citizens Advisory Group with, and make sure we include people with expertise in architecture in the Citizens Advisory Group, perhaps a member of, you know, either invite Francisco or Albert, who are longtime Architectural Review Panel members, to provide us with feedback. What we seem to have issue with is that there's disagreement over what the standards say, and people can tell you with certainty that they don't like a certain architecture, but they can't tell you what they do like. And having someone sitting at the table who has language, who can take their, take the feelings and the negative reaction to certain architecture, and maybe come up with some standards that would work, would be, would be helpful. Doing that would require, and hiring a consultant who is a designer, like, say, RRM, who we used when we did the Agoura Village specific plan, and they had proven very adept at taking wishes and thoughts, the AVSP CAG was 20 people, and they managed to find consensus with that very large diverse group of people, and come up with some standards that could be implemented. And so, option three would allow for that. It would probably take about six to eight months for them to work through that. It would create objective design standards for that, the Old Agoura Commercial District alone, and then we would be able to work through that process. Generally speaking, assuming there's no SEQA, you're looking at about a six to nine month process, and it's roughly $100,000 is what I estimate that to be. Another option, which I, I wanted to present to you, was it may be a good opportunity to consider the difference between creating a specific plan for the area between Liberty Canyon and the AVSP. That area, that whole entire area, is, according to RRM, when they were doing the AVSP, we had conversations about it, and they said that area is ready for redevelopment. And we could use, spend a little bit more money, $150,000, as opposed to $100,000-ish, again, rough numbers, and create a framework that we could employ the retail study that we did, the principles from the retail study that you just did, and work with CAG and a consultant to create a new specific plan for that whole entire area, so that it isn't just a series of design guidelines, but rather a vision for growth for the next 10, 15, 20 years. Those are the four options that I presented to you. If you have any questions about any one, I'm here to answer your questions, but with that, I have no other information, and I would just ask that you provide us feedback and guidance, so that we, we will know which way you want us to take this. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Are, so does any, before we, hold on one second. Before we move on to public comment, does any council member have any questions of staff? Councilmember Klein-Lopez?
Thank you. If money were not an issue, and time were not an issue, which one is the best land use planning option? Two, three or four?
Thank you for that question, Councilmember Klein-Lopez. The specific plan, without a doubt.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Wolf?
Yeah, thank you. Can you just walk through on option two about adopting the guidelines about the complications or the unintended, you mentioned unintended consequences, and you gave an example, but can you just dive a little deeper into that of what that, that could look like?
Sure. The way that the standards are currently written, the standards were originally designed to ensure neighborhood compatibility with housing. So it was, it was intended to take a look at single-family residences, which generally speaking are smaller, the construction materials are different, the construction requirements are different, and it looked at ways, it didn't outlaw any architectural style in Old Agoura. You're allowed to do anything as long as it has rustic features, and it explicitly recognizes an eclectic mix of housing. So if you were looking to create a non-residential, a non-residential set of standards, you would need to look at how non-residential construction occurs, and what the scale of non-residential construction is, and you wouldn't simply be able to take residential features and just stick them onto a non-residential building. The scale is off, the, it, they're completely different products. And you could do it, but it is not going to yield, it's not going to yield the look and feel that I believe you're, you're interested in. At the last, at the meeting where this came up, one of the residents showed a series of photographs from all over the city. We don't have a standard set of architectural guidelines or architectural styles. We don't say you must do this architectural style. We have a series of guidelines, and even though those guidelines don't identify an architectural style, as you ride through the city, and many of, many of the photos that were shown are not in the Old Agoura area, they're throughout the city, and as you notice, you can drive down Lady Face, which was a specific plan written in the 80s, and it still yielded, over time, a series of buildings that all look like they are compatible in a collection of buildings that need to be there. So those, those guidelines need to be made for commercial structures, and there's a cost associated with applying residential features to non-residential buildings, because the non-residential buildings are larger. And so, the, the roof that you might construct on a single-family residential house that's pitched, is going to be less expensive for you than a roof that you would have to construct on a 40,000 square foot office building. It's not, it's not going to be apples-to-apples comparison. So if we're going to go through the exercise of paying to have the standards done over or clarified, it would be my recommendation to you that you do it in a manner that will yield a result that you can be proud of at the end of the day. And I'm not sure that just saying that these standards apply to residential and commercial also will get you there.
Thank you for that. Can I, can I ask one more question?
Absolutely.
So on, so let's say that we do implement a specific plan, what type, sorry, what would trigger having to be in compliance, like, regarding remodeling? Like, how, what's the threshold where if someone wants to, like, change their building, it would have to fall under that specific plan?
It depends on what you wrote in the specific plan. So if you could be as restrictive or as lenient as you wanted, because it's a brand-new document with, with brand-new rules. Generally speaking, the building code has a threshold, and our municipal code has a threshold for when you are a major remodel for the purposes of building, but for the purposes of land use, you would, you would define what you want that to be. I will tell you that I have spent quite a bit of time having conversations with the Architectural Review Panel, and with other professionals who are trained specifically to be able to identify architectural styles and character-defining features on buildings, and I was doing it to try and come up with a definition for when does a specific plan kick in, what modifications? And all of the professionals that I've spoken to, along with my experience and recommendation, is that coming up with a hard and fast threshold does not work for you. For instance, if I have a beautiful building that's filled with stained glass windows, and I say, "You can change 10% of your building," and all the stained glass windows happens to be 10%, now all of the stained glass is removed, and you have vinyl windows, that met the threshold of 10%, but that changed the whole entire, the whole entire building. And so, it, you could say, you could take a building that had a very, let's just say, it was a church with a big steeple on top that happened to have a clock, and that's less than 10%. You can cut that clock off the top of it, and you, is your development the same development it was before you did that? So the reason that we look at these things on a case-by-case basis is so that we can look specifically at what it is you want to change, and then with the help and guidance of the Architectural Review Panel, we can tell whether or not you've tripped over into major or minor, and you could write a process like that into a new specific plan, so that it's, it's understandable.
Thank you. Very thorough, thank you.
Thank you for that. Any other questions? Councilmember Anstead?
I mean, I just, I'm a little confused about, like, the fact that we can do, I'm just trying to understand the, whether we can do a plan that doesn't require an environmental document, but if we do more in-depth and have a citizens committee and all that, then we have to do an environmental document?
All of them would be considered projects under SEQA, so you may have to do an environmental document regardless. You would know at the time what your impacts are, and what you're proposing, and whether or not that project triggers a SEQA review. Generally speaking, we can exempt, we can exempt common sense policy documents, but if that policy document, say for instance, required a change to our infrastructure, like the AVSP did, where the intersection was changing, then you have physical disturbances, and you have to think about that. So at this stage, I wouldn't be able to tell you whether or not there would be an environmental change, because we don't know what the drainage, what the drainage is like down there, we don't know what the roadway system and network may have to be, and so at this stage, it would be way too early for me to be able to give you a yes or no on whether or not an environmental document would be required. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I think so. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna turn to Madam Clerk. Do we have any public comments on this item?
Thank you. Yes, you did receive a written public comment prior to the meeting that was distributed to the council, and would be part of the permanent record, and that was from Jess Thomas, Old Agoura, representing Old Agoura homeowners. We do have two speakers this evening. Our first is George Coleman, and we've distributed on the dais, the written correspondence that he asked to be distributed to you.
Thank you.
So George Coleman, followed by Daniel Farkas.
Again, George Coleman, 5676 Kaladney Drive. First of all, I want to thank you for the rapidity, thank you Mayor Protem, of getting this issue on the table after the 566, 5066 Chesbrough problem. And I gave you tonight a distribution, because in the year 2000, many of you were not here. You were born, but you weren't here. And we had, in front of a five-member planning and zoning committee, we were working on this, and the concepts you have are some of the things that we were working on back in 2000 with Mike Camino. So when it came up for the 5066 Chesbrough, we thought that there was already a commercial overlay, an Old Agoura commercial overlay in existence. That was really part of the argument that Danny was raising, Ron Troncotti, and a lot of other people. So Jess Thomas went back and found these emails, and I decided, we decided to present them to unite. But on behalf of the Old Agoura homeowners, we request that the council vote on option number two. You had three options, I think, presented in the staff report for, well, option number two, I think, I only remember, that was the $100,000 one? Was I right on that one? $200,000? $100,000, okay. So that's, that's where we would like to go, as part of the Old Agoura homeowners. So I'm glad it's in front of you, and hopefully, bygones will be bygones, and we'll see what happens going down the road, and Elise won't be here to participate in the future, but that's the way it goes, I guess, anyway. Thank you, guys.
Our next speaker is Daniel Farkas.
Good evening, Daniel Farkas, 28442 Driver Avenue, Agoura Hills. So Old Agoura is known for its unique charm, scenic beauty, scenic beauty, and strong sense of community. By establishing residential guidelines within our Commercial Overlay District, we can protect, protect the identity of our neighborhood, and the overall quality of the life of our residents. Properly designated guidelines would ensure that new commercial developments harmoniously coexist with Old Agoura, preserving the aesthetics of our city. Floor area ratio, FAR, and concave lots should be reviewed before adopting any changes. These very important tools will maintain responsible-
Excuse me, we're in the middle of a meeting! No, I'm sorry, you need to leave. You can sit down, you can sit down. I want, sir, you need to leave, or sit down and be quiet?
That was interesting. Do I get a 30-second extension?
Yes, you do.
All right.
We're just gonna pack it in.
Well, it was, it was interesting, because I've got my eyes to you guys, all six of them, as you can tell, and I hear this, who is this guy, who is this guy, and I'm like, okay.
I guess you didn't like what you said.
I guess you didn't like it, because I hit that FAR and concave lot sentence, and then it just went like, who is this guy? All right. So anyway, I really think that floor ratio, concave lots, should be reviewed before adopting any changes. These are important tools that will help maintain responsible developments. These are subjective standards that we should really identify, and put gradients, and make sure that we can properly scale projects, and FAR should also be part of our residential when it comes to modifying it for ceiling heights and for mass. So in conclusion, I urge the city council to consider the initiative seriously, for the betterment of our community. Together, we can preserve the future of Old Agoura and protect the values that we cherish. And I would like to, if possible, as you guys are looking at adopting these guidelines, be involved in it, and perhaps maybe add, add some, add something to the equation, so that we don't have friction in the future, and that we can all work together to preserve our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Farkas. Okay, so no other speakers? Okay, thank you. So now we will move, any other questions of staff? Okay, let's move on to deliberations, and we're gonna go with you, Councilmember Wolf. We're all talked out.
So, thank you. I'm leaning towards option two, because I think that's the most inclusive. I mean, three. Sorry, I'm a little, yeah. I apologize. So I'm leaning towards option three, because I think it's the most inclusive, and I think that it helps keep the character of, of that region. But my, my one concern is, is this, you know, $100,000 robbing Peter to pay Paul, and what's the timeline on that? And so, that is my one concern, but I do think that I, I like the option three. I appreciate that there's defined objective standards, and I think that the timeline is in a reasonable length, but hearing Community Development Director Thomas speak, would there be validity in just going a little bit further too, is kind of what I'm thinking? If we're already opening this up, why not look at going a little bit further with it? So right now, I'm leaning towards option three, the $100,000 one, but I do want to hear from the rest of my council members.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Klein-Lopez?
Thank you. Thank you for putting this together, and for addressing the very imperfect processes that we have, that are just a part of government life, so thank you for this. I think that- I think that we should make this part of our biannual budget process because this is a big deal. And we're very close to opening up our next budget season, we're just a couple months away. And so rather than give a recommendation on three or four, what I would recommend is we make this part of our budget process so that, number one, we're not pulling something right now at the end of our two-year budget cycle and give Mr. Ibanez a heart attack. But we would have to pull something. You know, we have budget goals that have been in process for more than two years at this point, and so I wouldn't want to, you know, pull the carpet out from one of the other very important projects or investments that we have going on. So I also feel like there's a lot more detail to these two viable options, three and four, that, you know, could go to the land use, I guess Land Use Economic Development Committee to make a recommendation to the council during the budget season. And then we have a clear slate of understanding how it might fit within our budget. Maybe we have the extra $50,000 to do it right. Maybe we are -- put more of a value on the timeframe, you know, which is, looks like could be a year difference. So I would recommend waiting for the budget season, which is just around the corner. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Sylvester?
Thank you. Well, full disclosure, I did discuss this with Denise Thomas, and I really appreciate your input. There's an old saying, penny wise, pound foolish. And I think we -- I agree with Councilmember Klein Lopez that we should be spending the funds that need to be spent to get it done properly. I also think it's -- I'm sort of leaning more towards number four because not only would it encompass that little, small economic development area, which is sort of like parallel to the freeway, but it'll take in the whole area from the Agoura Village specific plan to Liberty Canyon because that's the area where we have the least development and, you know, in the next 20 years, that's where people will be building. So I think we'll be cutting off our nose to spite our face if we rush it and then suddenly we find, well, we haven't protected this area, which is right next to the Oldagora overlay. So it should all be blending in together. So I'm in -- I mean, I think we definitely need to do it, but I would prefer option four if we can find the funds. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Anstead?
I think, I don't mind saying that I think the idea of putting it in front of the review, our subcommittee, the Real Estate Subcommittee is probably a good idea. And I think I would be split between three or four as well, and I think having the Real Estate Committee review it and give us a recommendation based on their in-depth review, I'd be fine with that. So that's my feeling on it. Because I think I'm torn between both of them as well. I do think those two, that we do need to have input from the community, and that's why those two options, to me, are the best two options.
Thank you. You know, I actually agree with Councilmember Klein Lopez, and I think that this is a matter for the budget workshop because when, as we all know, we all come with a million different projects and then we've got to see where we prioritize and where we're going to spend money. The only other thing I would add to that is that with all the state mandates, you know, plan number four is like two to three years away. I don't know, you guys should consider that at the budget workshop, whether you want to spend that kind of money, and the state could take the whole thing. You know, who knows what's going to happen? And I just wanted to say that, you know, I won't be here for that, but for wherever you go with it, I'll be supportive, and I hope you will look at how to define substantial changes, how to, you know, take a look at the FAR and take a look at concave lot. And so other than that, you know, that's my feeling on it. Does anybody have anything else to add?
If I might, I --
Councilmember Wolf?
I was a little flustered when I first spoke.
That's okay.
So I like the idea of combining three and four, but so was the recommendation to bring it to the budget workshop and so we would then -- and then just, so we're talking it through, the budget workshop is in March?
Yes.
Of '25?
Correct.
Is when -- okay.
And it's a two-year budget, so it'll be the start of the two-year budget.
The start of the two-year budget. And then, so a council member would bring that forward, and then is there a way, and this is kind of a question, to hybridize three and four at that time? I don't know if I'm allowed to ask a question right now, but...
You can ask a question. What was the question?
Is that if we bring it to the budget workshop in '25 for that two-year cycle, would we be able to hybridize option three and four? And I don't know who I'm asking, I'm just kind of -- sorry.
Well, that, it'll then go to the land use committee, I would think.
If you do three, you're only getting design guidelines for the discrete area called the Oldagora Commercial District. If you do four, you would get design guidelines for the entire area that is, that you define, which would include the Oldagora Commercial District. So depending on where the CAG landed, you could add the same design guidelines for the whole area, or you could have a designated area and do it, but it would be included in option four. Does that answer?
Yeah, that does. And then what I didn't add that I wanted to add during my comments is I do want to see community input involved in this. I think that's really important, the whole reason why we brought this forward. So thank you for letting me do a restart.
No, that's fine, no problem. So who wants to make a motion? Because I'm hearing that different people want different things. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion that we bring this back to our budget workshop in March of 2025 for further discussion and investigation of what works for the area.
And Mayor Protem Sylvester seconds.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Then can we have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Anstead?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein Lopez?
Aye.
Councilmember Wolf?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Sylvester?
Aye.
Mayor Buckley-Weber?
Aye.
Mayor Buckley-Weber, you have approval, five to zero.
Thank you very much. And now we're at council staff comments. Are there any comments from staff? Any comments from the City Council?
I would just like to compliment our staff that have been going around picking up signs that shouldn't be where they've been put. So thank you for keeping our city looking nice and clean.
Any other comments?
I hope somebody's going to talk about the upcoming events. Are you?
Amy? Let's see, what do we have? We have on September 30th, we have Lisa C. for One City, One Book.
October.
You're not leaving. No, I'm just kidding. Now you've got to listen to the comment. One City, One Book with the author Lisa C. is going to be so fabulous. I think that we have almost sold out, even though it's a free event. But, you know, go on and register or get on a waitlist, it's going to be really wonderful. That'll be at the Event Center. We have the State of the City on March, I mean, November. Give me those dates again.
Thursday, November 7.
November 7. Thursday, November 7. Everybody's invited. That's going to be a really special event. I think you're all going to love it. So come on up to the Event Center. We're going to have some, a lot of fun at that night. I'm not allowed to say anything, so I'll just keep it at that, that it's going to be fun and interesting. And then we have...
Thursday, November 7 is your State of the City, and it's also the Mayor's Art Show.
Yes.
That's going to be a really, it's going to be a really good event, and it's 5:00 to 7:00 PM, and it's free. We'd like you to RSVP, but it's not required. And then we've got November 13th, the City Council meeting, we'll be honoring outgoing Mayor Elise Buckley-Weber. And then I think we'll have Holidays on the Hill, the first weekend in December, which is December 4th and 5th, I believe, up at the Rec Center, so...
That's great.
Busy bees.
Very busy. That sounds wonderful. Thank you for that.
Can I add one more event? And thank you is, I want to thank our Clerk Kimberly Rodriguez, who works her tail off this time of year at election time.
Yes.
And thank you, you know, election day is, yeah, election time is here, and you can vote your, by mail, you can drop it in the ballot box, which is what I did, and I got my confirmation. And then I know we have a vote center open for four days before actual election day here at the community room or up there.
If I may interject, the first 11-day opens on Saturday, this Saturday, at 10 o'clock. And that'll be at Westlake Village Community Room at City Hall. And then our vote center opens up the following Saturday, on the 2nd, November 2. And also, there will be a vote center that same day opening at the Thousand Oaks, I'm forgetting the name of the hotel that's right here on Agoura Road.
Oh, yeah, I saw that.
Thousand Oaks.
The Marriott.
The Marriott? Okay. Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
And my final statement on that, dealing with a teenager who doesn't think his vote matters, democracy is not a spectator sport.
Very good. Thank you.
Could I add one more thing?
Yes, absolutely.
One more event? I'd just like to wish everybody a happy Halloween and to let you know that Hempstead, can I confirm this, will be, the road will be shut down at 4:30 PM, just for pedestrian traffic. Thank you.
Will it be haunted?
Yes, very. And so, you know, on a somber note, I'm actually going to close the meeting in memory of a former mayor council member, Harry Schwartz, who passed away about a week and a half ago. Harry was very special, and many of us, our city was well-represented at his memorial service this past weekend, so thank you all for that. Harry was always upbeat. He always, the glass was always half-full. And in all the years that I served with him, I never heard the staff or anybody say a bad word about Harry. He was really special. His family was thrilled to have everybody at the memorial service, so again, thank you on their behalf. And I just want to say, just, you know, Harry's the one who got me involved. I know I said this at the memorial service, we worked on the Fountainwood Homeowners Association together, and then he appointed me to the planning commission where I served for the six years. And then he and Dan Cooperberg recruited me to run for City Council, and, you know, here I am. So again, Harry was very special, very smart, very organized. He loved history, he loved politics, he loved movies, and, well, the rest I'm going to keep for the State of the City. But so in Harry's memory, I'd like to close this meeting for Harry Schwartz, and may he rest in peace, and may his memory always be a blessing. And he will be greatly missed by our community. So thank you, Harry, for all your work. With that, the next regular City Council meeting is scheduled for 6:00 PM on Wednesday, November 13, 2024, in the Council Chambers of the Civic Center located at 30001 Lady Face Court, Agoura Hills, California. This meeting is now adjourned in the memory of Harry Schwartz.